Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Call the [inaudible 00:01:15] town council budget meeting to order. Would you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our [inaudible 00:01:23]. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, some announcements. Nancy Harrington is excused. She won't be here tonight or Thursday night. Thursday night is our, January 22nd is our regular council meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room at 7:00 PM. And Thursday, February 12th in the Matthew Thornton Room is also a regular council meeting. Is that the public hearing also?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Yes. That will be, also will be the public hearing on the, on the proposed budget. For once I got an extra. Instead of begging for one. Okay, any public comment this evening? Seeing none. Moving on, tonight is pretty much public safety night. So, Chief, we'll start off with fire. Eileen, it's Budget 03.
Okay. I'm just going to say a few things about this and let them get into the details of it. As you know, most of the salary and benefits information is not prepared by the department, but just reviewed by the department. So, what you see under wages, professional and wages hourly, you see those decreasing and wages hourly significantly by $20,000. That relates to new staff, old, higher-paid staff leaving and newer staff coming in. Then, the, under overtime other, the chief and his staff are proposing an in-house training for paramedics. And part of this is the paying for the backfill of the person when they're at school. So, it looks like a large number, and I have increased the overtime number, regular overtime is increased by about 2%, but the balance relates to, or about $6,000 relates to this in-house paramedic training program that the chief will get into with you. Workers' comp, health insurance went down a lot. And then, let me see what I want to get into here. Then... The, under education and training, you'll see an $11,000 increase. $10,800 of that also relates to the in-house paramedic program, which is basically to pay for tuition and that kind of thing. And that's all I have.
Okay. Chief, it's all yours.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the council, town manager. If you'd like to call Chief.
Sorry. And Finance Director, Assistant Chief, Assistant Town Manager, McCallie. The budget process over the last few years, I wanted to actually kind of review that just a little bit, has been, I guess, I want to say wonderfully pleasant dealing with Eileen. We've had issues where we've had cuts, we had to look at wants, we had to look at needs. We've gone through that. And we've had a process that was, prior to Eileen, that was more of a hit or miss, shake it up, try to beat it up, shake it up some more, beat it up, shake it up some more, and then try to work out the bugs. I really would like to thank the town manager again. This process that we've went through in the last couple of years has been right, straight up front, right forward. We're looking at the wants and needs. There's no, I want to say, issues with the budgets. We're straightforward. The town manager looks at us and says, "Give me what you think you need to run this department." We come up, we have a meeting, maybe two, but it's been really down to one meeting. This is where we are, this is what we have, we discuss it, and it works out very well. So, I want to thank you for the process. This has been actually very good from the years past, the processes we've had, so. She's allowed the department heads to identify our wants and ensure that we focus on our needs. How's that? It's, it's, it's a good, good process. Again, working with the town manager over the past months, I believe we identified most of the needs of the fire department in this budget. One thing that I like about what happened this year and in the past is that the town manager has encouraged us that if we believe that something important was removed from the budget, we should bring it up to the council for their consideration. And to me, that's, that's very, very important as a fire chief and a department head within the town to say, "Yeah, this is our budget, but there are some things that I would like to bring up and for reconsideration." I have two of those that I would like to talk about first. And first, there with the department study currently in process, and as the council's aware, we're going through an in-house department study, and the loss of the four firefighters in the past years that we've had. We're compiling information, and hopefully this comprehensive study will provide guidance for the future needs of the fire department. I think that's where we're looking for, what we need in the future, based on, I'm going to use Eileen's terms, based on facts and documentation of what we need. Okay? And hopefully that when we move through this study, we'll have all that documentation and facts to back up where we need to plan for the fire department to go in the future. And then we can relatively bring budget process into that. The two items, or one of the two items I'd like to bring up for consideration is, first item is 8103 wages. In the fire department, in the last two years, we had the, I've had the ability or the luxury of putting together a great proactive, forward-thinking management team. We have good people, we need to ensure that we train these good people in all levels of the organization. In the budget, I proposed a 5% wage increase for Assistant Chief Bornham to bring his salary in line with his counterparts in both fire and police department. Salaries of these, in these positions are in the area of about $83,000 per year. And that's just salary. And there's no overtime for fire department chief officer personnel. Currently, Assistant Chief Bornham's salary is $76,128. A 5% increase would bring him to about 79,934, or five and a little bit would give, bring him to $80,000, which would bring him into similar salary ranges as positions that are equivalent in the fire and police department. We are aware that no one is getting raises in the department, in the town, and I understand that, but I think this is very important. I believe that we need to retain good people in the right positions, and by doing that, we may have to make sure that we adjust the salaries to do that. I have a fantastic administrative staff now. We are making leaps and bounds, we're moving this department from where it was to where it is going. And in the last year, we've, in my opinion, we've gone miles ahead of where we were in the past for the benefit of the organization, being the fire department, and the benefit of the community. I'd like the town council to keep that in consideration. The second item that I was talking about was 8910, which is capital reserve fund purchase, and 8406, emergency management. And that's the purchase of an 18-foot trailer to store and transport emergency management sheltering equipment we have purchased over the past years. This equipment is currently stored at the Reed's Ferry Fire Station. It's kind of stacked in the back of the station, and during an emergency, moving it is very time-consuming and manpower-intensive when we are already responding to multiple emergencies. If we had the ability to put that back into the budget with the trailer, which is about $15,000, another $1,500 to fit it up, and about $1,800 to put a generator onboard, that would allow us the ability to move those sheltering equipment anywhere at a moment's notice with either a fire department vehicle, a highway vehicle, or any other vehicle that could tow the trailer, rather than trying to get personnel to take the stock from the station, pile in the back of a backup truck, and move it to the Adult Larry Community Center or to the middle school to set up a shelter. I would like the council to also take that under consideration.
There was a second town member, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
You had 84, I said, what was that?
It was 8910, which is the capital reserve.
And what did you have in there for that, Chief? Because it's not noted on mine.
I had $15,000 for the trailer, $1,500 to outfit the vehicle, and $1,800 for the generator. And if we got the trailer and outfitted it without the generator, maybe we can do that at a different time. But I think the trailers are important to add. And if we just keep that in consideration when you're doing your deliberations after... The cost of the trailer is $15,000 under 8910. $1,500 to fit up the trailer between identification, shelving, strapping to hold the equipment inside, and then $1,800 to install and fit up a generator for lighting, so when we're setting the equipment up at night, it'll have its own power source. Other than...
Can I just say one thing? Sorry. I just wanted to tell you that it's very confusing, and I understand why you're confused, because we, I removed that whole thing from the budget, so you don't even see it. That's why you don't see the $15,000 that he's asked for, and you don't see the $1,500, and you don't see the other one, because I removed all of those three things.
Come on.
Yes, Chief, do you currently have a generator of the nature you're talking about? Yeah, stored in the back of the Reed's Ferry Station?
We have some older generators, they're not designed to fit inside an enclosure. We could probably use that generator, put it outside, wire it, and plug it in from the outside would be effective.
Thank you.
Tom? So, help me understand, you want to put these supplies on this trailer and have them there permanently? Is it...
That's correct.
How often do we pull them out of the trailer and use them? I mean, is things going to get moldy sitting around in a trailer? Where's the trailer going to be?
The trailer is, would be stationed at Reed's Ferry where the stuff is, is stored right now. Some of the problems we've been having in the past is that varmints get into the stations and storage areas, and they have chewed their way through some of the supplies by putting them in a trailer. Here, enclosing it, so you don't have that problem. It's temperature-controlled in the station, so I don't see a mold issue at all.
Okay. A lot of times when things are sealed up for any length of time, it seems to be a problem when you open it up and pull them out or something.
No, it'll still go through a, our weekly checks of that station, because they'll go through the trailer, open it up, make sure the generators run, everything works on that trailer. That's, that'll be done weekly anyway, so the trailer will not just sit there until it's used. It still has equipment checks that has to go through.
Okay. And, and there's, so this stuff is stored today on the floor in the...
Yes, it's stored in the back on pallets.
And there's room to put a 16-foot trailer in there?
Yep.
Do we keep anything there else? Do we keep any vehicles there?
Yes, we have Engine 3 is there, currently, right now, Forestry 3 is there. Our Forestry 1 is there for the winter. And right now, we're storing the old Engine 5 right there as we're taking parts off it. And we're cannibalizing that, and then that'll eventually move to the highway garage after we get all the radios and all that stuff out of it. And then they'll finish cannibalizing it there for parts as they repair vehicles. And then that spot there will be used for that trailer.
Okay, thank you.
So, how many times has this been deployed in the past?
None, because we don't have it. We just purchased the equipment.
How often do you pull that equipment?
How often, yeah. How often do you pull the equipment? Or how often have you pulled the equipment?
We haven't had to pull the equipment at all. One of the things that I was slated to do was to ensure that we have a 50-person sheltering, sits, equipment ready to go. So, we purchased that in the last two years for the Adult Community Center in the event that we have to set up a shelter. So, we have that equipment, we have the cots, we have the blankets, we have everything to go. We just don't have the trailer to put the equipment in, in the event we have to use it.
So, so how much time do you really save by having it in the trailer already? I mean, there's, there's a loss of time in having to get into the trailer to check the material and stuff like that. I understand there's some savings in the equipment itself being protected from varmints, but...
And then personnel during an emergency? We are very limited on personnel now, anyway. And during an emergency where we have to set up a shelter, we're already responding to other calls as it is, so trying to get people and a vehicle over there that you're going to be taking the equipment from inside a station into the back of a pickup truck and then moving it outside to the Adult Community Center. It's still going to have to come outside there, but you have a shorter move.
Yeah, but, so you're saving some time in loading it on, from the pallet into a vehicle?
And then offloading it with personnel.
But you're going to do the offloading anyway, so...
That's correct.
The only thing you're really saving is the time it takes to load it off the pallets into a vehicle.
And storage, yeah.
From storage.
Yeah, and storing the equipment on the trailer.
Oh, yeah. Loading it onto the...
Yep.
Right, okay. But you don't have any, any comfort feeling for how long that is? Are you saving hours or 10 man-hours or...
I... You're probably going to...
I mean, you're asking...
To move, to move that equipment there, it'll probably take you, probably four or five people, about two hours to move it. I would say probably would be the average.
The time you take to inspect that equipment now versus the time you would take if it's in a trailer, do you see any difference there?
I do not. As long as it doesn't come out, the wraps are individually sealed, so as long as it's not broken, it's all set. They're just looking for varmints, trying to run the generator, make sure all the lights are working, you know, air's in the tires, the general equipment check. They do that weekly.
Okay. It doesn't seem like you're saving a lot. I, I understand the convenience, and it is better.
It is convenient.
I'm not in the emergency situation that's, that's trying to keep the staff available during the emergency, so I understand there's some things I don't understand there, but, but you're asking for $15,000 to $20,000 to sit in a room for, we don't know how long.
Yes, sir.
And, and be inspected weekly.
Yep.
Okay.
How much damage has that had?
Pardon?
How much damage?
Very negligible right now. It's been in there for, how long has it been in there?
Six months.
About six months.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Continue.
Okay. Okay, other increases in the... The budget that we talked about was the paramedic program that we looked at. Well, let me go down, just let's go down the line to 80. Actually, most of the items in our budget are very insignificant in increases. The increase we have is 8203 for operating supplies. We've gone from $20,500 to $21,500, which is an increase in added medical supplies, which is just a projected cost increase, and the cost of materials that are not being replaced by the hospital, and just increased runs. The second increase that we had was from 495, which is this year's budget, to $54,310 was for protective equipment on a replacement schedule for firefighter protective clothing, which is for safety. We're at a point now where a lot of our equipment is starting to age, and we need to start increasing it, so I just, I increased the dollars for those personal protective equipment in that line item. 8220 is the same, 8230 postage is the same. Electricity, natural gas, water, sewer, vehicle fuel, we've gone down from 42064 to $40,540. Telephone, as you know, we went through iPads, we've changed a lot of our telephones, and the use of iPads for ambulances and engines. Last year's budget on that was $15,601. I've increased that to $15,626. After doing the numbers, we're about $25 short on that budget line item where we went through and we canceled some of the old system, when we explained that with the iPads, some of the old management systems we used for the land cards and that type of stuff, and reallocated that money into the use of the iPads and those old cardiac monitors. And again, after reviewing that with the addition of the two iPads on the engines, it came up to about $25 as an increase. Dues and fees went from $7,575 to $7,625. We added $40 for an extra paramedic for certifications on renewal fees. Other than that, everything is the same. General insurance, travel, and insurance is the same, traveling meeting is the same. Buildings and grounds, there's no change. Maintenance of machinery, 8331, there's no change. Maintenance of vehicles, we've increased that from 84 to $91,800. Our current rate right now is, looks like we're going to be a little shooting to be over budget if the current repair processes go, continues the trend that is trending right now. So, last year, we took out $20,000. This year, I want to put the $20,000 back in. And that's due just to the fact that the vehicles and equipment, we are sending them out more often because they're computer-based. We don't have the technology to plug in and to repair those, or read the codes on those equipment. So, at that point in time, we, so we see these vehicles going out more, so that would be the increase there. Maintenance of office equipment is the same. Maintenance of communications equipment from 4460 is the same. Maintenance other, we've gone from $14,075 to $19,100, and the major increase there is the added cost of the self-contained breathing apparatus. As we indicated, they're getting older, so we've put additional money in to replace parts on those to keep those operating and functioning correctly. Education and training. We talked about the in-house paramedic program, and to give you an idea of how that works and what we've come up with for a cost on that, Assistant Chief Bornham put that project together, so if he would... He'll give you a rundown of the information and the whys, and why we came up to looking at an in-house paramedic program.
That's, it's in two, two parts of that program. Since I was promoted, my area of, what I'm working on is support services of personnel. And over time, we're starting to find across the state, because we all want to have highly-trained firefighter paramedics and provide the best service possible to the community. In years past, finding trained paramedics that were also certified firefighters was relative, I wouldn't say easy, but a little easier. But across the state, fire-based EMS has become, everybody's kind of leveled up their level of service or ALS. So, in years past, the net we were casting when we were trying to replace personnel to try to find a paramedic was a little easier. This past year, there were 24 certified firefighter paramedics on the state list. Of those, some of them were already working in other places. We hired two paramedics this last year who were good hires, but we're having a hard time hiring, if we're going to specifically look for a paramedic if we get into that position, we don't want to hire someone just because they are a paramedic. When you cast a net, if you're looking for an EMT basic or an AEMT or a paramedic, the pool of qualified candidates or potential good employees is greater at the lower level. So, as, as this has transpired, we've looked at, oh, how do we get through this to make sure we have high-quality candidates that are going to be good long-term employees without getting kind of cornered into a box? And this is what we've come up with. Let's hire the best possible candidate we can. Let's not box ourselves into a corner looking specifically for a paramedic for that ALS skill, and then let's reward the employees that are here that are doing a good job in their EMS skills and providing a quality service to the community.
Would you expand on ALS? Because I know what it means. Now, Dan knows what it means. But people watching us at home probably don't.
Okay. Advanced life support.
Okay, thank you.
At a minimum, everybody on the fire department is a basic EMT. Our level of EMS training is not as high. The next step up is advanced EMT. They can start IVs, they can do a few more things than the basic EMT. The cat daddy, I guess, the top dog is a paramedic. It's hundreds of hours of training. Their interventions that they can do on, for someone are, sometimes I can't even believe what they can do. But it has to do with electricity or the monitors, what they can do with defibrillating, the medicines that they can give, and there's a broad range of them. I'm not going to get into all of them, but it's the level of care that that, they can intervene in an emergency or medical call, and it's crucial.
How many people in the department right now have that advanced certification?
The paramedic?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have eight paramedics.
Thanks.
Okay. So, I guess the, we don't want to get penned in, plus, we want to have more flexibility when we do have paramedics out, we'll drop down, we have two on shift right now. If someone's out for a vacation or a training class or a sickness, we'll drop down to one. We back that up with the AEMTs. So, the, the, the plan was to try to get, to increase our level of paramedics to three per shift. So, to do that, what we want to do is train our own. People that are good employees, that have been good for the community, kind of looking toward EMS, they have good skill set, train them. To do that, the paramedic programs that we looked at, both of them are similar in price, is tuition's $10,800. So, you know, there's classes and then clinicals that they're going to have to do. NIMC, which is out of Elliott Hospital, estimates that's a 1,200-hour program. What we propose to do, the other component at, is the, I think it's $6,000, that might be a round number, but...
Yep, that's right.
Is to backfill. So, if we're going to send someone to 1,200 hours of training, if they're on duty, relieve them from duty, we need to fill that back in, and that's what that money's for. It's going to be very hard to track someone to make that level of commitment and not have them worry about their time, either vacation or personal time, and time away from their family. That 1,200 hours, contact hours, meaning their education, their clinicals, which is all their rotations at the hospitals, and they go through emergency, they do ambulance time, cancer time, cardiac, all that stuff, to learn those things, that's going to help them later, in addition, their, their study time. So, our proposal, I'm sorry.
Just to explain, expand a little bit on what Chief Bornham is saying. I was going to call you something else. But anyway...
Something nice, I hope.
Yeah. And a term of endearment. But anyway...
Let's not go there.
No, it really isn't. I was being sarcastic. But anyway, we ran into a situation this past year or so where we had a per diem employee who was a paramedic, and it was a disaster. So, the person, even though he was trained, was, was not efficient in what he did. He caused an awful lot of potential problems out in the field. First, I don't know why, but that's why they're talking about growing their own, is hiring the best employee they can find and then training them to be a paramedic rather than the other way around. Just because someone's a paramedic doesn't mean they're a good employee or a good fit for here.
Come on.
When we're talking 1,200 hours, are we talking 300 hours for four... When we're talking twelve-hundred hours, are we talking three hundred hours for four trainees?
At this point, this is to train one paramedic.
The twelve-hundred hours.
Yes.
Thank you.
What's the time span on that twelve-hundred?
It'll be two years. From the time we start to the time we, they finish.
Dan.
Kinda like, as an unscientific poll, do you have a roundabout number of, you must have already talked to some of the men i- in the department, do you have a rough number of how many people are actually interested in doing this over the next, you know, say even three to five years or?
At least three at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Tom?
So, I'd like to understand, you're looking for money to pay their tuition?
Yes.
And then, you're looking for money to pay so that they don't, they get, they get...
So, when, when, just say firefighter X signs up, we're gonna send him for tuition on his regular scheduled duty day, let's say, class meets once a week for the Monday. When he leaves, we're not gonna make them take vacation or personal time, which a lot of guys do sometimes to get training on the outside. The person that backfills that, we're gonna have to pay that person to be here.
You're gonna pay him while he's going to school as well?
Right. What he's talking about is that, if you go to school, if he's set, scheduled for his class every Tuesday, and not every Tuesday he's gonna be working, but if his shift falls on a Tuesday, we'll backfill that class and pay somebody to cover him during the time he's at class. And then, when he comes back...
Yeah, but he's paid while he's in class?
No.
No.
Then, why is there a cost to backfill? You're just taking...
Cause I have to pay somebody overtime to do that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Well, he will get paid for his class if he's on shift, yes.
Well, that's the part I'm getting at. I mean, a student that goes to the university, certainly not getting paid to be educated.
Zero cost to him. His duty, that'll be, on that, that day he's scheduled, he'll go, he doesn't have to use his personal vacation time.
Correct.
But the cost is to bring someone else because we'll be running down on that shift cause he's away at school.
So, he will be getting paid to, cause he's working the twenty-four hour shift. And for the six or eight hours or that he's at class, somebody will cover that, then he'll come back and work his shift. Finish up his shift.
Finish the remainder of his shift.
And the other times that he's not, and all the clinicals are on his time.
Right. So, you've calculated in what you anticipate that cost to be?
That's what we anticipate that cost to be. Six thousand dollars.
Six thousand.
Yeah, over the two years, correct? Long over the year, over the one year, right?
Per year?
Yep.
The ten thousand is over two years?
Correct. And the six is over one year.
And you have ten thousand in here, so you'd be sending two people? Is that the theory?
Nope. One, ten thousand is for one, and the six...
Yeah, but it's for two years. And this is a one-year budget?
You'll do it again.
The whole two years is up front?
Yes.
Okay. So, next year, when you put ten thousand, then you're gonna send another person?
Another person will start that process. That's correct.
In the budget, is one ten thousand, eight hundred dollars?
Right. One person.
So, what if the person decides to, to quit Air Mac Fire Department in the middle of that two-year program? If it's prepaid?
We're going to have some kind of an agreement that a person needs to sign, that if they work here a certain number of time, a certain period of time, that they would have to reimburse it.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, would that be a two-year agreement or do we have any idea of how long that would be?
We haven't fashioned, or we haven't come up with a document yet, but I would imagine that it would be, um, starting from the beginning. So, whatever we pay, we would expect the person to have worked a certain number of years here. And if they don't, then, then they would need to reimburse it. And the same thing for the second year.
And you would anticipate a change in salary for this person after he's completed this?
I think it's in the union contract.
They would now be a paramedic or something as opposed to...
There's a little bit more. I don't think, I think they get a fifteen hundred dollar stipend. Is that right?
Yep.
Per year?
Per year.
Versus a, um... Is that part of their regular wage?
Yes. Their regular wage plus the stipend for paramedic.
Eighteen hundred dollars. So, if you look on page thirty-three, under, um, under wages, eighty-one oh four, you can see, um, EMTP, about halfway down the page.
Yep.
There's nine of them for eighteen hundred dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you know offhand how that compares to other, what other departments are paying those positions?
I would say, depending on the department, I would say we're a little on the low side for paramedic.
Eileen?
My previous employer paid five percent above the cost of a master firefighter in their wage scale.
But we have a delta, delta in the wage scale. That was just educational incentives you were quoting to me.
Uh, do paramedics make more? No, they don't.
Same as master firefighter.
Says master firefighter.
Master firefighter, master firefighter.
Nine thirty-five. Master firefighter, paramedic, one thousand thirty-nine.
That's because?
That's because there are different steps in the master firefighter realm. They're all get, there's only one master firefighter and there's steps in the master fire. And the only thing that they get additional is the educational incentive. So, instead of being an EMTA, which is thirteen hundred dollars for an incentive, they would then become EMTPs, which they would get an eighteen hundred dollar incentive. The master firefighter scale, whether they're a paramedic or a regular master firefighter is the same scale.
One?
Am I correct in, in kinda calculating that over the four years, we're looking at about a seventy thousand dollar effort here? Thank you.
No. That was a guess. Shake of the head, you know.
Twelve, ten, twelve.
Sixteen, thirty-two, sixteen, four, sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, well, sixty-five thousand, yeah. Yep. Sixty-eight thousand, yeah.
Oh, yeah. One could say that. But, but in this, it appears, you know, it would be appropriate, I would think. It's not like we're growing a job just for the sake of growing. It's, uh, I think we've all recognized the movement over to the medical response as opposed to the fire response, and that this seems to, it would work into that perfectly. Although, I could be mistaken.
Eileen?
Not, not to pretend that I'm a firefighter or an EMT or anything, but obviously, the higher level of care that a person can receive in the first few minutes of their, of their emergency is a matter of life or death. So, this was just something, it's, it's not a matter of, of making the, of mission creep. What it is, is actually making our firefighters and EMTs able to save lives without waiting to get to the hospital. Because sometimes, the, the period of time will be the difference between a successful and a unsuccessful trip.
And I believe the goal behind this whole program was to ensure that we have the best employee possible to meet that medical need. And by doing that, the employees that we have that are interested in this program have been here for five-plus years, and their firefighter knowledge is, you know, and their dedication to the community is there. They wanna take it to that next step. The people that we've talked to that were, would be interested in this program, I don't see those being the people that they're going to just get up and say, "I'm a paramedic, I'm leaving now." I don't see that. They have a commitment into the community.
Right.
So...
But the thing that Eileen talks about, I know that my son was hired a, as a police officer in his time at the academy. If he left before a two-year period, he had to pay back, I think it was a prorated portion.
Right. And we talked about that with HR about dealing with the attorney to figure out what that prorated overtime would be.
Yeah.
You know, if you left the first year, you know, the whole thing, I don't know how that would work.
Right.
That would have to be the legal issues and how we can enforce that through council.
And I presume that the analysis that you're doing currently with the department will give us some idea of how many times that that is necess, that, that would've had an impact.
Yes. Just looking at it from the, from an overall standard, what, one of the things that I learned was that when you see a fire truck going with an ambulance, that's an advanced life support situation, which would require a paramedic. So, in going through a big month's worth of actual calls, there are a significant amount of advanced life support. Probably, you know, I mean, with, off the top of my head, I would say at least fifty percent are advanced life support. Am I wrong on that?
Nope. That's perfect.
Okay, but, how many of those fifty percent were short-staffed?
Good point, but we'll, we'll be looking at it.
Yeah. Okay. Dan?
Just more of a general comment, whether, cause I'm not, it's not a secret, I'm not revealing whether I'm for or against your plan, but it seems like we've had a theme here that has recognized that firefighting is not, this is not your father's grandfather's department anymore. So, I'm for the concept of having more firefighters trained in a more broader scale of paramedics and medicine, because that seems to be where living it. We, we know this is happening every day. So, I, I don't have a problem supporting that concept. I guess my only concern is, if we have eight guys now, is there a, a number in the department where you feel like, you know, the number should be twelve, it should be fifteen? I- is there a day where all thirty-five master firefighters are all going to be semi- paramedics? And, right or wrong, may, maybe that is the future of all fire departments of, of cities or towns of our size. But as far as the concept, I think we, as a council, we've talked about, we're witnessing how firefighting is just not what they do, uh, for the most part, of their daily, weekly, monthly trips. It is the advanced life support situations and that kinda thing. So, more of a comment than a, than a question, but please, if you...
Well, as Assistant Chief Bornham stated, and we've discussed this many times, our goal right now is to have three on a shift. And the logic behind that is if one's on vacation, I still have two paramedics to take care of both ambulances for ALS calls, for that fifty percent. And that person is still certified as a firefighter on the all hazards approach, so they can do EMS, they can do fire, they can do hazmat, they can do forestry, you know, water rescue, vehicle rescue, so they have all those skills. So, uh, by adding three paramedics to a shift, it's just gonna benefit the community on those ALS calls when we have somebody on vacation, when we have multiple calls at the same time.
And to answer your question, the goal is twelve? I don't, I don't anticipate, or twelve total, three per shift. You're gonna have, if you go too many, it seems like great, right? Everybody a paramedic. Skill degradation. Cause they have to be practicing those skills. So, that's our number, that's where we think would be best for the size of the community and what we do. Any more than that would be cumbersome.
So, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's a fixed number. I- if you happen to have a thirteen guy that came up to you and wanted to do it, it doesn't necessarily mean you would be like, "Sorry, we're out of quota," so to speak.
Right. But they also, conversely, as people move through promotion, retire, we may drop from twelve to eleven, or ten. We don't wanna be in the position where we have to go out and find a paramedic. We'd rather have in-house and the good employees, that's the, the purpose of the, the whole plan.
And to have an officer as a paramedic's a good thing, but sometimes that paramedic skill can't leave town depending on who's there. Ie., if I have a lieutenant, I do have lieutenant that's a paramedic, actually, and he's a great lieutenant and a great paramedic. But in the event that the captain is out, a lot of times, we don't backfill officer for officer. So, now, that lieutenant moves from station two up to station one, so he can't leave town. He is the officer in charge on weekends or whatever, so he can't leave town. He's acting in my stead on the initial call till I can come from home and take over command, and he continues with his skills. So, there's a lot of little factors that play in on that advancement and that skill that's there. But by being an officer, he now has that advanced medical skills to manage those mass casualty scenes. The accident we had on the turnpike over the weekend there from the ice, multi-car accident, multiple injuries. An officer with a paramedic, he has those additional skills to manage that.
That answered the, okay.
Okay. Emergency management is eighty-four oh six. It's forty-eight eighty, that's without the trailer and trailer fit, fit up. I see that there's some questions on the trailer, and I, I think that Counselor Koenig brought that up. How many times do we do use that? So, that's something that, I was looking at convenience to move this stuff so it's available, manpower, and have it ready to go in the event we have to move it, but maybe you're right. Maybe once every other year doesn't justify the twenty thousand dollars to do that, and we'll have to come up with other methods of storage if that's the case. Rescue equipment is the same. Question? Eighty-four fifty-nine physical is the same. Buildings and grounds, buildings, infrastructure upgrades. Eighty-five oh two is the same, no change there. Office equipment, no change there. Communications equipment, we've moved from a budget of six thousand to a budget of nineteen thousand dollars. And we started this a little bit last year to purchase and replace, uh, mobile radios for apparatus that are starting to fail. So, instead of trying to replace them all at one time, we're looking at replacing two or three a year, depending on where we're moving forward, and that's in the budget to do that. So, that's what that increase was. We've looked for grants, currently, there's no grants out there for mobiles. There's grants out there for portable radios, but that's for the police department only, there's nothing for fire. So, we're looking at to replace those portables in the future, but we're keeping an eye on when the federal government's gonna release from the police portals to the fire portals to allow us to do that. What's that?
Just taking hand-me-downs, have the PD give you there so they can get the new ones?
Well, no, they get the grant first. And then, once their, their radios have been replaced, I think the chief has them already replaced, then we, they move to the fireside and then we'll end up doing those.
And usually, there's a trade.
Oh, that would ruin the whole concept then.
Yeah. And we're usually a generation behind too, so, oh, well. Operating equipment is the same, no change, and capital reserve fund went from one hundred twenty-five to one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That's where we stand on the fire budget. If there's any questions specifically, yes?
Eileen?
That I missed.
Captain, first one for the, you have eighty-two thousand.
Turn your mic on.
You have eighty-two thousand dollars. It's, um, your capital reserve fund purchases are going up from a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which looks to me to be this eighty-two thousand dollars for SCBA breathing apparatus. And that's in the case of us not getting the grant. Is that correct?
That's correct. And Assistant Chief Bornham, that's his project also.
As you know, the, um, we...
Going to need it with the PD anyway. Might as well take it out. Just remember to speak into the microphone.
Yeah, I'm good. The, the capital, the number of eighty-two thousand in, I don't have that right in front of me, the change, is to start the process of replacing our SCBAs. The, we have applied for a grant, it's been submitted, we won't know until sometime late spring whether we were successful in that. Tell you that the, um...
That's where we stand on the fire budget, if there's any questions specifically, yes.
Arlene?
That I missed.
Turn your mic on.
You have eighty-two thousand dollars, it's, your capital reserve fund purchases are going up from a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which looks to me to be this eighty-two thousand dollars for SCBA breathing apparatus, and that's in the case of us not getting the grant, is that correct?
That's correct, and Assistant Chief Borrmann, that's his project also.
As you know, the, we...
Going to need it with the PD anyway, might as well take it out. Just remember to speak into the microphone.
Yeah, I'm good. The, the capital, the number of eighty-two thousand, I don't have that right in front of me, the change, is to start the process of replacing our SCBAs. We have applied for a grant, it's been submitted, we won't know until sometime late spring whether we were successful in that. Tell you that the, the grant total for the town's portion of that, if we're successful, will be thirty-one thousand, and some chance here, some, I have it. The total project as submitted to the federal government was three hundred and forty-four thousand, I think it was eight hundred. The town's portion of that, the ten percent in federal dollar logic, is thirty-one thousand and some change. Doesn't make ten percent to me, but that's the number they gave back to us. The difference in the number, we anticipate having to replace, if we have to fund this ourselves, internally here in town, we're gonna have to do it in phases over three years. The difference in price, because I know that was asked, of what we asked for from the federal government and what we would actually replace, when you go to a federal program, you have to meet all federal standards. So, right now, that would be more AIPACs than we currently have, being a number of five. If we were to replace it ourselves, we're probably not gonna meet that standard. We can still do that, but to replace them, what we currently have, we can do that for the eighty-two number for the next few years, three years.
And what the federal government says is that, in order to meet the grant, you have to have a SCBA for every riding position. So, we have five riding positions on some of the apparatus, we don't use them, we only use four. So, we would only buy four, but in order to qualify for the grant, we have to put in for five. So, if there's a riding position, the forestry, because you have to go through the whole department, we don't put SCBAs on forestry, but it's required by this grant for every riding position to have one. That's why the grant is for more than what we would replace it for.
Does that answer that question? I think.
So, what's the difference between how you would, how you would replace it and what the feds are requiring?
In what regards?
In the numbers.
Thirty, we currently have thirty-nine AIPACs, we would replace thirty-nine AIPACs. Federal government says we need forty-four, based on our department.
All right.
Takes the question, what does one cost?
Our price for our budget for that federal program was sixty-nine hundred dollars per AIPAC, plus the, there's extra bottles, the other...
At least they can do that math, all right.
Any other questions? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Curry, can you, can you explain to me why it is advantageous to put the sheltering in place materials on a trailer as opposed to permanently storing them at either the O'Leary Center or the Merrimack Middle School?
Currently, we've checked into the O'Leary Center to store those, and speaking with the caretaker there, he's telling me that there's not a lot of space, and if it's downstairs, it's really musty damp, and we've had, he doesn't recommend storing them down there. I have not checked with the middle school, but most of the usage of this would be at the O'Leary Center rather than the middle school. If we open a shelter center at the middle school, in most cases, not saying all cases, in most cases, the Red Cross would be involved, and they would be bringing their equipment in, to augment what we have, if we opened a smaller shelter prior to. I guess to say what was the positives on this would be, is that, you know, as I said earlier, it's on a trailer, it can move easily, it's stored in a, I guess, a safer environment, and it's just manpower-intensive. I'm looking at being able to move it and unload it with a minimal amount of people, in the event that we have to use that.
And whatever, and whatever truck you use to pull the sixteen-foot trailer, I'm assuming you're gonna be able to negotiate Church Street to get the trailer down to the O'Leary Center?
Yes.
So, I know you're not going up the hill off of D-Dawby?
No, we're not going up that hill.
That'd be illegal.
That'd be illegal.
Yes, I know. But if it's an emergency...
Remember that?
The other question, it's, it's a small quibble, just to clarify, if you could, please, Chief Curry. On, I apologize, be open for a second. Eighty-four oh six, where you have shelter supplies, sixteen-foot trailer fed up, shelter generator?
Yep.
It's listed here at thirty-eight hundred, but you quoted me thirty-three hundred, why the five hundred dollar difference?
Because when we did the budget and have the costs, we found, whittled those down to what it would actually be.
Okay, so it's actually thirty-three hundred, you would be asking for an appropriation?
Correct.
Just a general comment?
And I thought, and also on that, the highway department can do more of the wiring than we were going to have in the original quote, we're gonna have it done outside.
Okay. More of a general comment to the proposed program to train in-house, I do support it. I'm very happy that the department's thinking strategically about our transition from fire response to being first response, and I also, at least wanna, would like to give you and your staff a little bit of credit, because, I mean, we're growing. I mean, we've got not one but two potential, you know, apartment complexes coming to town, and God only knows the kind of impact that's gonna pose on, on not just our fire resources, but also our public safety resources. So, I think that the, I think the more, I would support seeing more people getting certified across the board, so that, you don't, you don't have to think, you can send, you can send a team out to do what needs to be done. But if, you know, if twelve's, if twelve's the magic number, then, then twelve's the magic number, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna quibble over it, but, I support it, because, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna be seeing more people moving to Merrimack, and choosing Merrimack as a place to work and live. We don't know what the age range is going to be, you know, the demographics show that our state is, is getting older, so I think because we're getting...
Third oldest in the country.
I stand corrected, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So, I think we need, I think you're responding to that particular trend, and I think it's important that the, that the people out in the community know that this is, this is, this is why you get paid to do what you do. You come here, and you're saying, "This is what we're seeing, and this is, you know, where we need to go with this." I mean, it's up to us as a body to decide whether or not we agree with you or not, but I certainly wanna, wanna come out and at least say that I do support the in-house program. I think it is important that we begin to get firefighters that you deemed worthy enough to, if that's the appropriate word, probably shouldn't say that, but, you know, that you, that you deem suitable enough to, to be paramedics in this community. And I agree with you, it's a fit, you know, you can't go out and, they may look great on paper, but, you know, they have, they have the personality of a shoebox, and it just doesn't, doesn't fit in, so...
And as I said earlier, I think the budget process that we're going through now gives us the ability to, you know, give those alternatives out there, and things that we're looking at, and for consideration. So, I think it works very well.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Paul, if you could, sorry about that. If we can go up to eighty-three thirty-two, the maintenance vehicles, the chief cut twenty, or added the twenty thousand dollars back that he took from last year's budget. At the numbers I'm looking at, was last year's budget at a hundred and four thousand?
Last year's budget was at ninety-one?
For eighty-three thirty-two, eighty-four thousand.
Right, but it says he added back, because adding it back, did we lose money elsewhere then in that line? Maybe that's what it is, and I didn't notice.
You mentioned ninety thousand, is that what you're saying?
Right. Looks like eight thousand, right, exactly, so that's...
Yeah, the actual is ninety-three, and the budget was eighty-four, right? And thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen?
Right, the actual, there, but last year, I didn't know if the budget actually originated last year at a hundred and four, and you took twenty out to bring it down to the eighty-four, and, because it said you wanted to add twenty back, but it only shows about eight thousand, just shy of eight thousand dollars difference.
The difference is seventy-eight hundred dollars. It's not twenty.
Okay, that's what you...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Staying on that track, you said one of the issues was you didn't have the equipment to read the codes. Is that correct? I mean, that's what...
From, yes, from the highway department, a lot of the problems we have are all computer-based, so they're sent out. The trucks are sent out for diagnostics and repair.
Okay. So, is there an advantage to having the diagnostics in-house, or is the nature of the repairs in general more than what they're capable of handling at the highway department?
It's not beneficial to have diagnostics in-house, only because the cost of the diagnostics change, they said they have to get upgrades yearly, which are very expensive, and in order to keep up with those, they're very expensive, and the programming and the level of fixes that have to happen are above where we are on certain areas, transmissions, motors, computers, that type of...
The other thing, when we were discussing the highway department, I explained to you that the person that was most familiar with the fire apparatus retired this year, and I still have not replaced that position. We're looking at it from an evaluation point of view of whether or not we have, we should keep as many mechanics on staff, given the, the nature of the new equipment, or whether we should transfer some out. So, that's all being reviewed as well.
Okay. I just wanted to close that circle. Thank you. Bill?
Just a general question for staff, if we could just look at eighty-two fifty, under vehicle fuel, are we locked into those prices?
Those are just an estimate, at the time when the budget was being created, what I do is I look at mobile, I take forty-two cents off of what mobile has out there, and I times it by one and a quarter, because that's what gas was going up, it was going up twenty-five percent. All of a sudden, we're in a downward spiral right now, and, and we don't know where the bottom's gonna go, but it could go just, up just as quick as it's going down right now, so, we're just hedging our bets with, with the oil, oil and diesel fuel prices. Diesel's not coming down as quick as regular gasoline right now. So, those were just estimates that were used, that I used, at the time when we put the budget together back in November, which is, I don't know, how many cents less now? You know, maybe thirty, thirty, forty cents less than when I was looking at it? So, that's where we used those numbers from.
Yeah, I filled up a two-eleven-nine in concrete, go ahead.
Just an overall comment on the fire department operation, operating budgets, you know how we break out the operating budget versus the, versus the unusual things, versus the capital reserve in and out, but if you just look at their operating budget, it has gone down seventy-one thousand dollars, or one point three-six percent from last year, even with the in-house paramedic program in there. And one of the main reasons are, is because our health insurance in that department is showing a decrease of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Anybody else? Tom?
Chief, the F-three-fifty ambulance, two-twenty, under capital reserve fund purchases, are you talking about a new ambulance in this upcoming year?
That's correct.
And the one-ninety-seven at two-hundred thousand, that was last year, or the year before, or?
When was that?
How often are we replacing ambulance?
Due for replacement in March.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
That ambulance, one-ninety-seven's due for replacement this March, we have a new ambulance coming in for that.
There's a two-hundred thousand dollar number in here that looks like it's at most two years ago, and it's against the one-ninety-seven number, you're not replacing an ambulance in two years, are you?
That, that number, we just, that ambulance was just ordered this past, late in the year, probably November, December, and that's due for replacement, and that'll be in, delivered in March, and that's replacing one-ninety-seven.
Tom, Counselor Koenig, we have three ambulances.
Yep.
We looked at the oldest ambulance on the fleet, we replaced it, we last, two years ago, we had a capital reserve purchase of it. There's some delay in getting the ambulance, such as a fire truck, because they have to put the body on and do the wiring. So, we're getting that one that we ordered two years ago, in March. This is the second oldest ambulance in the fleet with the most mileage, so we have to replace that. The ambulances are running about a hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand miles, when we start looking at replacing them. If we put in, if, if it's in this budget, we probably won't get this ambulance for another ten to twelve months out. So, if we buy it in July, we probably won't get it until almost the following July, on a build on an ambulance. So, this will replace the second oldest ambulance. We also have another ambulance that we have, that we have bought a couple of years ago, and what the chief's gonna do is trying to space these out, because it was boom, boom on these two, ambulance purchase, purchase. We're gonna start spacing them out and trying to rotate mileages on some of the other ambulances to, to get the mileage down, so that we're not buying every other year for an ambulance, but we're spreading it out three to five years in between ambulance purchases.
Okay, thank you. We also had a long discussion, last time you purchased, which is probably the one-ninety-seven, the F-three-fifty?
Yep.
And the other ambulance, I'm guessing, is not a three-fifty, it's a two-fifty or one-fifty or something like that, or is everything the same now?
Yeah, they're up to, they're, we're buying four-fifties right now.
Okay.
Which is, the cost is very similar, okay, but it's recommendation from the maintenance department, because they're larger brakes, larger discs, and they have less wear and tear for the cost of the vehicle.
Okay, well, where I was gonna go was to ask how that was working, and you're saying...
It's working very well.
Not enough, we need more.
What, what we've done is, in working with Paul and trying to get these ambulances spaced out, we put together a, I know this is hard to see, this is a three ambulance rotation schedule based on miles in year, and what we're doing is we're rotating the ambulances once they come in, so we can manage the miles, so we can start pushing these ambulances farther apart, so when we purchase them, we have two or three years between to purchase another one, then two or three years between to purchase another one. Then there'll be definitely a three year, and then a three year, then a two year, then a three year. So, that way, in the future, it's easier to manage the dollars or money from those ambulances. So, and we've pushed this out actually to twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, on the projection of the mileage, so we can start managing the miles better on these apparatus, so we're not having multiple ambulances year after year.
So, okay, and you said the four-fifty is not a significant increase in cost over the three-fifty, it's just a heavier duty, or?
That's correct. It's almost the same chassis, it has heavy-duty brakes and cooling systems and stuff in that line.
And those are things that, that experience a lot of wear and tear on an ambulance?
Correct.
Because of how they're handled and...
You seem to drive really fast and stop really fast and drive really fast, so...
Okay.
Plus the idle time.
Idle time, yeah.
You remember that night?
Thank, pardon?
You remember that night, when we talked about idle time here?
Yeah, I do as much. Not gonna go there again.
No, it's better than when the chief, one of your predecessors, or predecessor, one of your predecessors, not the most recent one, but came in and told us that they were buying to a number, not to the equipment, so they were putting inappropriate equipment onto the chassis, which caused it to break down quicker. Oh, yeah, I was sitting there, what?
Really?
Really.
Hey. It's the curse of being on the budget committee for as many years as I was. You hear all kinds of what?
Yes, you do.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, are we through with this?
We beat it left and right, so...
Yeah, to say the least.
We're not through.
What do you mean, we're not through?
If I may. Eighty-five oh two, replace, upgrade tile carpet paint, repair molding floor station, I don't know what... I don't know what molding means. Does it mean the floor's getting moldy?
Not molding as in molding, but molding as in crown mo- or floor molding. Wall molding along the wall. Door molding.
Get to the edge?
Yes, edge.
For buffing.
Yes.
Thank you, I just was not positive.
All right. All right. Code enforcement. Eileen?
The only, uh, thing that I added here that, uh, the chief had asked for was a part-time person, um, part-time secretarial, uh, person, which he can explain to you.
Okay, well, what we've asked for on the increase of this budget is a part-time person to work twenty hours per week. And what we're trying to do is to provide coverage for, uh, our current staffing. Our current staffing level right now is that we have an administrative person for the Building and Health Department and one administrative person for the Fire Department Emergency Management. So, those, uh, individuals working different departments, uh, do multiple tasks. When one gets sick, one calls in sick, one has vacation. We are running short. We have, I have nobody to cover those areas. For instance, uh, if we have a, if, uh, the administrative person from the Building Department takes a vacation day, we have to move our inspection schedule around because one of the building official or the building inspectors, they have to make sure that at least one of those individuals is in the office at, 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 at all the time. Because we have people coming in frequently for questions, building permits, information. So, we have to cancel and reschedule those, uh, inspections during that time. It's pretty much the same for the Fire Department. If, uh, the administrative in the Fire Department is out, uh, we have nobody to do the, uh, administrative work, answering the phones, uh, doing burning permits, setting up inspections, the same thing but on the other side of the house. There are times when, uh, the administrative is, a person for the Fire Department who was out on vacation, if we have a, multiple calls, people leaving the station, the fire phone may not get answered because if we're out on calls, adminis- uh, three of us, multiple calls going, there's, there's nobody at the station. Then, and the phone rings and rings, it'll ring, I think it rings about nine times and then it transfers down to dispatch before it picks up. As we start looking, as, as I sat down and looked at these individuals and what they do and their jobs and how much they do and where they are in their career, the fire administrative person is probably getting close to retirement, and we have no succession program and nobody that is even trained in the amount of work that they do that could probably replace them in a very, uh, timely manner. So, by bringing in a part-time person and try, and training that individual to take care of both sides of the fence, if, if the fire is out or building is out, understanding those applications, we are looking at two things. A, if we show a need, increase the time, uh, that person is with us, or if we have a person retire, that individual can at least take over those functions and provide a training mechanism, if not, take over the full-time position. So, that's where we are right now with those individuals, and that's what I'm looking for, for that position. I can read this whole thing here that I put together for Eileen, but I don't think, uh, you want me to do that. But, uh, it's actually multiple pages of what their jobs are, what they do, their functions, and my recommendations for the position. It, it is rather lengthy, uh, if you want a copy, I can get you a copy so you can understand that. Uh, but I think it's, it's a benefit to the town, the community, uh, and the department, and those two individuals that are really covering fire, rescue, ambulance, emergency management, building and health by two people. It's, it's, it's a monumental job that they do. They do a fantastic job.
Okay, Dan, you have a question?
Uh, Chief, uh, just for clarification, right now the, that department has a currently is a four-man staff? Four-person staff?
Yes, there's a part-time health official, uh, a full-time administrator, a full-time building inspector, and a full-time building and health official.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think I'm at the area for this part-time, eighty, eighty-one-oh-seven? Can you help me understand the numbers that are here? It looks like for that total line, you were requesting fifty-seven-six and the town manager put in fifty-one-three, and there's a six-thousand-dollar difference? But when I add up the numbers in the column, it's six thou- I mean, it's the numbers the town manager had, so you have a part-time person and you want a second part-time person?
Nope. I don't. What I put in there is I put in for twenty-four hours and it was cut back to twenty hours.
You put in for twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Which is, okay.
Three-eight-hour days. And it was cut back to twenty hours, that's why it's fifty-one.
And so, you're, and twenty is just not gonna cut it for you, you need the three-eight-hour days, or?
It's easier to manage three-eight-hour days. You work three days and you, when somebody takes a day off, you can manage three-eight-hour days. But at this point in time, if, if, if twenty hours is what I can get, I think we'll use that and then, then move forward with it in future.
Okay, I mean, I don't know how part-time people work, whether you can swing two days one week and three days the next or something like that?
Yeah, we can do that. I guess we're gonna have to look at vacation schedules and we'll try to hire somebody that has the ability to swing. Maybe it would be somebody that does a, has, I don't know, kids on the bus, so they come in later and work shorter days, six-hour days or something? Or three-five-hour days?
Okay.
Four-five-hour days, excuse me. That's my math. I caught it quick.
Four-five-four-hour days.
Four-five-four-hour days.
Dan?
This is a question more for Eileen, since Eileen has worked more with the chief than either anybody up here. I just wanted to know if Eileen was backing this, um, after, with, during the discussion that you had with the chief about this position?
Yes, I am, and that's why I included in my budget.
At twenty hours.
Anything else? Lon?
Another little wee one, but it just piques my curiosity. Eighty-three-twenty-one, maintenance of building, two-thousand dollars for a sign to say what? Where would it be placed?
We're looking at, uh, and that was an estimate, a swag, scientific wild guess, and where it says on the front of the state...
That's not quite the...
It's close. It's close.
It is not a literal translation, translation. Yeah. Oh, yes, it is. It's a term of art.
It is a term of art.
Uh, on the front of the state, it says, Merrimack Fire Department. I'd like to put Merrimack Fire Department, Building and Health. Try to get, match those letters so when people pull in, it's right there, matching the letters in front of the station where our Fire Department logo is right now at Central Station.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Was, was that all you wanted to talk about on this? I mean, I know we, we dug in when you started talking about that one item. I don't know if you were finished?
No, that, everything else is, that was the only actual change, major change in that budget, was the addition of that part-time person.
Bill?
Regarding the sign, isn't that something DPW could do?
I don't think it would match the building and look as appropriate as it should for a public building. I think it should match the letters that are there.
Have you had the conversation with DPW to see if that was something they could accommodate?
Uh, they're metal signs, so talking to, uh, Adam at that point in time, he doesn't think he can manufacture those letters that are on there.
Okay.
All set? All right. Thank you. Next one up is commu- Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next one's communications. Oh-five.
I don't need the lights down yet. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, how are you this evening? Members of the council?
Good.
Town manager? Chief Financial Officer McCann. Just, uh, wanna give you an opportunity to ask a few questions of us, and I'm sure if you wanna proceed as if you did with the Fire Department, ask questions on the fly or wait till after the presentation, uh, but feel free to ask questions as they come up. I think it might lend itself to moving the process along a little bit more quickly so that if there's something on your mind, please bring it to our attention right away as I go through the budget. We've had an opportunity to sit down with members of the staff and, of course, the town manager and Paul to discuss what we're looking for in terms of the communications budget when we were preparing for it. So, the first thing that we did, of course, was sit down with members of our staff and our supervisors to look for some input in what they felt accordingly, our administrative and support division commander and his assistant Lieutenant Trepani, and the communications supervisor, what it is that they think we need for an appropriate and responsible budget to present to you folks in the town so that we can move forward with the upcoming, uh, fiscal year. Uh, on the face of it, you'll notice that there's an increase right now in the budget to tune of about twenty-seven percent total. Now, lion's share of that is beefed up in our radio system upgrade and capital reserve fund plan, uh, something that Lieutenant Trepani has been very closely in tune with our radio vendor, Ospey Mountain Electronics, and talking about what it is that we need to do to bring our radio system from where it was designed back almost fifteen years ago to where it should be going ten to fifteen years from now. So, the goal is to put something in place so that in the next three to four years, we can actually build a system that's scalable and expandable over the next ten to fifteen years, and that's something that we've been working very closely with our vendor to do. Conceptually, it's built, but of course, like anything else, it's something that costs a lot of money to do. And what we've done over the last ten to fifteen years with the radio system is we've expanded it to include voting systems and repeaters and the like, we've also tried to make sure that we're updating the pieces and parts that go along with it. Uh, radio systems are no longer giant consoles that come on the back of a truck and get installed in a communications center. They're all communications, or I say communications based to the extent that they're all built into software programs that are operated from a computer terminal, for example. And these are the kinds of things that the scalability of these systems is looking toward migrating to across the, across the spectrum of communications. And as you can imagine, when we talk about digitized communication system, there's a lot that goes into it. And they're not cheap. But in order to make sure that we're rendering the best and highest level of quality of service to our folks and also maintaining an infrastructure that creates a safe environment for our officers and public safety officials to work in, because we do dispatch not only for the Police Department, but also for the Fire Department, Emergency Medical Service, the Department of Public Works, and on occasion even for the Water Department. This kind of system has to be really our communications backbone. And when we talk about scalability, that's something that's like way over my head, but we're talking about things that are actually ingrained in someone's vision out there right now that haven't even come to the forefront of what this system will be able to do for us. But moving ahead, we needed to be able to identify what the weakness was in our communication system, and we have done just that. And that's where that two-hundred-thousand dollars increase, and I think the town manager spoke to that a little while ago when we were talking about the Fire Department's budget. It's gonna be something that's gonna be not only the backbone, but it's gonna be shared by breadth of services, of public safety services in the town. Uh, there were some other minor increases in the budget, an increase in overtime costs to make sure that we have the availability of our folks in the dispatch center to cover shifts that would go otherwise uncovered in the event that people called out sick or because of the nature of the employee pool in the dispatch center, which is a curse and a blessing. They've been there for a while and they certainly have accrued enough time where they can take it, and we're gonna make sure that we give them the availability to do that whenever they can. The curse on that side of the, uh, flip side of the coin is that now we have shifts that we have to backfill and fill. So, we've increased overtime a little bit, five-thousand dollars. Uh, we've actually kind of increased our office supply line, small amount, about a thousand dollars to actually reflect some actual usage. Our telephone share is increased by about three-thousand dollars, and that, to a larger extent, is not just telephone share or added cell phones or added MDT costs or the like, it's an actual reflection, I think, of the usage of our voter system costs when we enhanced and expanded our voter system, specifically the voter that we've had installed over at the premium outlet mall. Uh, maintenance and office equipment costs have gone up a little bit. Uh, basically, that boils down to the, the agreement that we have with our CAD, RMS vendor to make sure that we have twenty-four-seven maintenance support on that system at all times, meaning that they'll be on site and get us back up and running from, uh, an operational standpoint within four hours of us making that service call. It's certainly money that's well worth being spent, and to have that insurance policy more or less is something that, again, goes toward making sure that our communications background across the spectrum of not only providing the communications, but in having our offices the ability to research information, get information at their fingertips, and certainly our dispatches to be able to provide that level of service as well as that much information that our CAD and RMS database has to our public safety officials is so critical. And again, our capital reserve fund has increased to about a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars, I believe it shows in CRF, two-hundred-thousand dollars for communications equipment, and the lion's share of that allocation is for our radio system. And again, that really summarizes what our communications budget looks like for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, and certainly have, if you have, and have any questions, please feel free.
Finley?
I just wanted to clarify that the two-hundred-thousand dollars isn't for the purchase of the, um, of the communications equipment, it's for, it's a down payment, it's not the total cost. The total cost is over five-hundred-thousand dollars. So, this is setting aside money, and there'll be an additional amount of money next year and possibly the year after.
Finley?
I know the chief just mentioned, but I have to ask him to mention again, eighty-three-thirty-five, the maintenance equipment, the seven-thousand-dollar jump?
Yes.
I think I faded into looking at something else and not keeping up with you, so I apologize.
Oh, no, that's, that is mostly lion's share, that is, is actually in two pieces. It's for the, reflecting the actual usage of, um, the maintenance agreement, if you will, because of the aging of your equipment in our dispatch center that houses our records management data, database, we have a twenty-four-seven support system with the, our vendor, and basically it runs anywhere between, dependent upon the newness of the equipment, because it's getting aged, it's becoming a little bit more costly. I believe the server in dispatch is going on four years old. Usually by the fifth or sixth year, we're ready to change it out. And because it's four years old now, we're not looking at maintenance agreements of eighty-five-hundred dollars or nine-thousand dollars, we're looking at maintenance agreements of eleven-thousand or twelve-thousand dollars a year.
Because they're anticipating more, so it's actual usage that dictates what they're gonna be charging us for the next year's agreement.
And to, and age of the equipment, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Lon?
It's... When we are looking at making sure our radios are modern, up-to-date and whatever, are we also looking at what I think I understand is a problem of communicating between departments so that your radios and the Fire Department and so on are able to communicate with each other?
Yes, that's correct. And ever since, ever since the event at nine-eleven, that really brought that whole issue about interoperable communications to the forefront, the move has been to make sure that we're, we're not only buying equipment, but we're also buying software to work that equipment. That's what's called AppCo certifiable. AppCo, the American Public Communications Officers Association. And what they do is they've designed and put together some standards that are being adopted by police departments and fire departments and emergency service personnel all across the country so that when you buy equipment, whether the radios, mobiles, or console equipment or software that drives it, it's all what's called AppCo certified. So, that, like I said before, it's scalable to the point where you can start to work and communicate with other- So that, like I said before, it's scalable to the point where you can start to work and communicate with other surrounding agencies, whether they're coming from a town right next to you, or they may be coming from another state. It's really designed so that at the flip of a switch, they can turn over to your frequency or conversely, we could turn over to theirs so that communications are fairly seamless. And that's what this equipment is designed to do and be able to do, to provide us that infrastructure to be able to work seamlessly with other police departments. Regardless of whether they're on a VH band or a UH band, and there are some technological hurdles that have to be overcome because of it, again, way above where my understanding is and how it works. But there are departments in our state right now that are on different bands, and we can't talk to them. But the state is actually working very closely with all of the departments to make sure that the IP bridges and the infrastructure is designed in such a way that we can do that seamless communication without missing valuable information. God forbid, we have to go to a city like Nashua or Manchester where we can't right now just flip that switch. There are redundancies built in a place that will allow it to work on the short term while we work together to build and expand upon our current infrastructures.
Thank you.
Other questions? Tom?
So this communication equipment that's going to cost $500,000 or more to replace, what's the life cycle on that? And are we only starting now to save that money, or have we been over the past life cycle of that equipment?
This is the first, what we have had seen happen over the last few years is parts and pieces of the modules designed that really comprise our communication system have started to fail. We've had to build a microwave repeater. We've had to actually replace some circuit boards recently because the Fire Department had some problems on their side of the radio system. And what we're starting to see is it's starting to add up in the small, in the short term because the systems are breaking down. What the problem is, is that they don't make this stuff anymore. We actually had to have, just to give you a quick anecdote, we actually had to have a crystal built, if you can believe this, and it took four months to build this thing. And I don't know who built it. I don't know if it was gnomes or gremlins that built this thing somewhere, but they actually told us they had to actually build this thing because they just don't make them anymore. That was a huge cost for us, and that was something that we had to absorb last year. They don't do crystals anymore. They do it all very much differently, I guess is the best way to put it.
I fully understand that. Thank you.
But this is what's happening.
Well, you can get crystals, but they're not your kind.
Yeah. And I hate to refer to our system as kind of a Frankenstein system because every time we call them to come down to work on it and repair a piece that's broken down, they tell us, you know, with some duct tape and baling wire and fingers crossed, we can hopefully hope this thing out until next year, until we can buy a larger piece, the bigger module that goes along with it, which are expensive. So we're not buying $1,500 or $2,000 circuit boards anymore to replace the things that's burning out. We're going to have to start looking at buying $10,000 or $25,000 modules that are going to actually replace all of that part.
Okay, but so how, so we're going to spend $500-plus thousand dollars to replace something?
Yes.
And that something's going to last for three, four years?
No, actually, the life, the life cycle of that particular unit is designed in such a way that it's going to be module-based, my understanding. I'm going to refer to our technical logical expert Lieutenant Trepani to talk more about the radio system.
Well, as the chief previously mentioned about that microwave failure we had in 2012 and the extent of time it took, when we talked about the replacement of that, the vendor at that time told me that by replacing this, he was hoping that we could get 10 to 15 years more out of our system, but the technology's already become outdated. So that's something we started looking at that we have to start developing into. And when I sat down with them to discuss capital improvements in the future, what we were looking at, basically, the cost of replace the entire components of the system, and like I said, the technology's changing. You're going away from the copper phone lines that a lot of our receivers send into our voting system now. You're going to an IP-based technology. So the different components, like the major thing that has to be replaced first is our microwave system, which that alone's $54,000. I'll get to break down my folder, but then the next stage to replace our main transmitting radio components is, I believe it's $324,000 off the top of my head. That would get the bulk of our system right up to spec now. And again, the system would last us 15, another 15 to 20 years.
Okay, so if we're talking about replacing a 15-year life cycle, and we're saving it up now in the next two and a half years, what happened to the other 10 years?
What happened was is when we replaced the microwave system, the gentleman who works for the company, our company, said that we'll be able to get another seven to 10 years. And we were basing it on seven to 10 years. And then all of a sudden, we got basically punched in the head, so to speak, where, oh, by the way, you're outdated and you got three years and you need to get up to speed. Because you won't, if this thing breaks down, you will not have any parts. And that's why we had to throw $175,000 into it this year and another similar amount probably next year to get up to speed so we can make these purchases. And it was all because we were working on one estimate, and then we got basically blindsided and told, oh, by the way, you have three years and this stuff's obsolete and you will not get any parts.
So, well, I was just going to say, so this person, we spent a good chunk of change a couple of years ago, and now we have, a year ago, whatever, now we have three years left when we thought we were getting 10, seven, 10, or 15 years. That makes me question our vendor, and I guess he's great. He does a great job.
Well, if I can clear this up a little, that microwave that was replaced in 2012, this is a system that was put in place in 1999. It's already, it'll be 16 years old this year. I verified that it was 1999. The repeater system that came in after that to enhance our communications, that was replaced in 2005. So that microwave, it was just a salesman told me when we had the trouble getting the old technology replaced, he said, you know, best bet, this is going to keep your system, the existing system, going for 10 to 15 years, best bet. But when, you know, because of that, being fiscally responsible, we started examining where we're going, how we're going to tackle this going forward in the future. And when we went over this whole system, the gentleman that actually does the design system pointed out the fact of this digital interface unit, which is an actual communication model that works with the dispatch consoles, and the technology in the basement is a single point of failure. We do have a backup on that. If that fails, we can replace it with our backup digital interface unit. The problem is, those are no longer made, and the support for them ends in 2018. So this is why we're looking at a complete system overhaul now. I'm sorry if, you know, my statement earlier when he put the microwave together when they had to grow the crystals for that, he said, you know, best case scenario, we're looking at 10 to 15 years that this system is going to last because of the old technology.
Bill?
It's just more of a comment back to the discussion we had in 2012. And I don't mean to put any of your words in mouth, but I could have sworn that you said that this was, that microwave was just the beginning of something that needed to be addressed, you know, three to five years down the road, that you eventually would be coming back to the council to talk about this. So this, I'm not surprised by this, by this request. I really am not.
Dan?
Just to clarify, word, you said in like an overhaul, overhauling the system, but that's not really accurate, right? This is a replacement. The goal in two years is actually we're going to have a completely new system that isn't based on anything old.
Correct. This would, this would be new technology and a whole new system from the guts.
Tom?
I just was, I'm thinking that between this, the self-contained breathing apparatus or whatever with the Fire Department, these things that, that the reason they should be, apparently should be replaced all at once because of the change. They'd rather, for cost of maintenance, it's better to do it all at once. But those are some big hits that it seems like in 10 to 15 years, we have to anticipate a large impact. And we should somehow group those into a deal where we can fund them as we move along.
To feed on your, now that we're knowing this, obviously, as soon as, after next year's budget, obviously, 20, 15, 20 grand a year should be placed in probably a special communications account for that exact reason. So come 15 years later, you know, we'll have it. We'll have it ready to go. We won't feel any pain at this point.
No stick of shock.
Of course, you know, between the $300,000 this and from the Fire Department, we have a half, half a million dollars' worth of some important stuff that's on the table.
You're going to have to set $30,000 aside.
I can say whatever number I want, Mr. Chairman.
That's true. But if you're going by what they're talking about, the replacement cost, in 15 years after that, plus inflation, although you would hope that technology, the technology rules would work and it would come down, I would bet they're not, but just being the cynic. Fire police never comes down.
I like to think having 80% of the funding in place is better than.
That's true. That's true. Okay. Discussion for another day.
Lon?
With, with the caveat that I don't have enough time to worry about the 15-year cycles, I will say this. I think the communications department is well advised to be, as Dan said, not, not trying to repair old stuff, but getting to a point, however, keep in mind, Gateway computers were the be-all and end-all about 11 years ago. You can't find one now. Bing, bing, bing. I think the cycles are more like three to five years. So like Danny says, he can give you any number, but the effort is going to have to be there or we're going to be behind the eight ball every five years.
It's hard to predict that, that technological advancement and what it brings, yeah? We just don't know what, a 10-year, you know, you're in the business too, Tom. It's amazing what could happen in 10 years. Could be something that we don't even know exists right now, so.
Beam me up. Beam me up, Scotty.
Paul, which is a good job, guys.
Bill?
Yeah, quickly, Lieutenant Trepani, are you aware, are you aware of any grant monies that are available for something like this? And if those are worth pursuing?
There is a competitive grant each year, but they're more looking for new things, not replacement redundant equipment.
Okay.
I know the Fire Chief mentioned earlier about grants available for police radios, and that's done, that was done when I came before the council last year.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Tom?
I just can't keep quiet. So in the, in the, I don't know how many years I've been on the council, it seems like we're constantly talking about replacing expensive communication equipment, whether it's the spots terminal or the voters or, or the microwave or the whatever. And we're always hearing that they're 10 or 15-year lives. And yet every, every what, two or three years, we come up with this big number of things. So I really hope we're taking a look at the overall cost of equipment. And like has been stated a couple of times, we're trying to put away in a CIP-type effort funding for that as opposed to coming up with it suddenly in three years or two years or whatever number. I mean, we go through the CIP every year and we talk about things, but if they don't meet the $100,000 number or something like that, they don't show up as the large expenditures. But things that can end up being large amounts, we need to, we need to make sure we get a handle on them. Because it's hard to, it's hard to suddenly justify another 175 put into a savings account when that money's coming out of taxpayers' pockets. And it may be very important, but it would, should be nice if we could be very clear in understanding where that's coming from and where it's going to.
Well, that was one of the discussions I had with the vendor too when, you know, when we sat down. He said basically, this is what's going to cost to replace the whole system. It's like, okay, do we have to do it all at once or do we spread it out? So it actually is, we did break it down. We can do it a variety, you know, you got the one-time number, and then we've got each components where the microwave will be the first thing, and then there'd be another chunk, which would be the main body of the, replacing the voting system and the main base station. And then the third component would be the Fire Department portion of it.
This is actually one of the things that we had spoken with the finance officer about is creating that CIP line so that we can make sure moving forward. The beauty of the system that we're moving toward is it's not only scalable and has that lifespan of 10 years, it becomes more module, excuse me. So as the microwave breaks down, we replace the microwave module. We don't have to keep our fingers crossed and hope to God that the digital interface unit doesn't go down with it because it's all one parcel to the same thing kind of thing. So moving forward, because we've got a large chunk right now, the next couple of years may see that happen. But I think responsibly speaking, as you just said, it makes much better sense to start looking at, and we certainly are, long-term, and every year, put money aside so that when we have these module pieces break down, we can just kind of like pull them out and replace them without that big hit. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Anything more on this?
That's your communications budget in a nutshell.
Good move. Get in, get out. Okay. Police. Oh, four. Eileen?
When the chief and I and his staff talked about, they would like to add three officers to, which he can explain a little bit better to you. But my understanding of it is that if there is a particular type of crime in the, in the town that is going on, they want to be able to have a team of people that can be dedicated to kind of eradicating that particular problem. And what happens is that it takes officers off the street and while they're working on that particular thing. There's an awful lot of things that go on behind the scenes that none of us know about and probably don't want to know about. But, but anyway, so the police department has asked for three new officers. I said to them, please make your presentation to the council. But what you'll see and reflected in my budget is that I, instead of adding the three officers, I put money into overtime to the tune of, it looks like $28,000. Is that right, Paul?
$238.
No, a to, increase of $28,000.
Right, Paul.
Yes.
For that, for that particular, particular function. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Eileen, and I am going to turn over, we have a very brief presentation that Captain Dudash is going to address here in just a few minutes regarding our POP unit. The concept is, POP is an acronym for Problem Oriented Policing Unit. We've had a discussion amongst yourselves and members of my staff collectively, maybe over the last two to three years, where it has really kind of hinged on the request that if you've ever had an opportunity to realize, forward-thinking and having the vision of where you want the department to go, that you have a need for additional officers and make sure you bring them to your attention, which is what we're doing this evening. And there are some costs associated with it. Captain Dudash is going to break those down for you. We've had a lot of help from our chief financial officer, and we've certainly had the blessing from the town manager to go forward, at least give you an opportunity to see what it is conceptually and get an idea about what it is that we're trying to do with this unit. That's going to be something in just a few minutes. And in the interim, what I'd like to do is just go through our budget real fast. Excuse me, I don't want to say real fast and think that I'm trying to do anything quick on the sly here. But the budget as it stands looks like an increase of about 2/10 of 1% over last year's budget. We have increases in our supervisory overtime to a number of about $3,500. That's geared toward making sure that we have enough supervisory staff on and available during periods of time when we need them. One of the things that we're finding, as I spoke to before with our communications staff, is that they're, not so much that they're aged, but their time and grade is getting to a point where they're realizing that they have more time off and they're using it. So what we need to do is make sure that we have folks that are there that are acting as a resource and giving our officers direction when they need it, and that's what our supervisors do. We've also looked for an increase in part-time wages, a very small increase that is going toward our crossing guards. And our traffic officer at Turkey Hill Road just represents a small increase in pay to the tune of $0.50 an hour. We have an increase in overtime, which the town manager spoke about, roughly about $28,000. That's coverage for shifts and really goes toward our whole minimum-maximum manpower staffing concept where we have a minimum number of officers on at any given time so that we can make sure that the service that we're rendering to folks in town when they need it is available to them. Vehicle fuel is up a little bit, and that's only in anticipation of rising fuel costs. Hopefully, we can be able to lock into something that's a little bit more reasonable than what we're in right now. And there's been a bump, and we've asked for the town manager to give her a blessing for a bump in our meetings and travel line. By $7,200. By seventy-two hundred dollars. And, uh, meetings and travel is up by about two thousand dollars again. This is gonna give us an opportunity to provide our officers and supervisors a different level of training than they otherwise would have been able to experience. Right now, we're relegated to the training that's offered by police standards and training as well as some training that's put out by Primex, which is great stuff, but the, the opportunities are limited in scope so that when our officers have taken advantage of those training opportunities, either at police standards or at Primex, we'd like to give them opportunities to seek other enhanced, more professional training geared toward their own individual professional development. And having an increase in this line as well as an increase in our training, which is actually about seventy-five hundred dollars, will give those officers and our supervisors, our leaders of the department, an opportunity to reap the benefit of some other greater, more broad training opportunities than again, they would have otherwise been able to. We have an increase in our maintenance and building line, roughly about twenty-seven thousand dollars. This is going to address the poor lighting in our parking lots. It's going to go toward replacing the lockers that we have in our locker rooms as well as, again, it's a wish list, but we're looking at trying to get some irrigation out in the front of the, uh, station and around the areas that are currently covered by sods so that, uh, Phil doesn't have to drag hoses and sprinklers it all, all over the place to get that done and taken care of. As well as replace the aging fascia brick that's on the outside of the building. Some of it's cracked and starts falling off right now. Uh, we have a increase in our maintenance and communications equipment line. We're looking at purchasing two new police radar units to replace the, I believe the last two radar units that we have from nineteen eighty-five, if you can believe it or not, that are still working. Uh, but those are at a point right now because they do break down and when they do break down, because they're thirty plus years old, they don't have the replacement parts for those anymore. So we're anticipating being able to replace those as well as two brand new one hundred watt radios that, uh, we wanna replace, that are going to replace radios that we purchased back in, uh, nineteen ninety-eight when we first had our, um, radio system, our mobile radios in the Cruises replaced for the first time in a long, long time. Um, our K nine line is being increased to budget from one dollar to five thousand dollars this year. And that's in anticipation of the reduction in the number of donations that go toward that line every year from the folks at Crime Line who do a really good job for us, making sure that all of the money that they raise for our K nine, for Gunny, goes right back toward Gunny. Uh, we are looking at replacing Gunny, his lifespan is coming up on.
Replacing? Can we use the word retire?
Retiring Gunny, thank you. We are looking at retiring Gunny, um, over the next two years. And so Greg Walters is working very closely with our operations captain, Peter Albert, to look at opportunities that might exist where we can have a replacement. I really don't think any K nine is gonna be able to adequately replace Gunny to, at least to the extent and breadth of the service that he's rendered to the folks in the community and the, um, and the support he's provided for our officers while they've been working out there all the time, that they do work and while Gunny is working with them.
Becky, as you know, works in my office and she, um, heard that Gunny was going to be retiring and she asked if he would be double dipping.
And I guess it all depends on where he'll end up going. I don't think he's eligible for a retirement pension.
He's got four paws. It's more than double dipping.
Uh, we're actually looking at a reduction in our vehicle line of roughly about twenty-two thousand dollars. We purchased our K nine vehicle last year and that has been, actually has worked out extremely well because we'd be able to get those larger forty expeditions off the road now, which have been not only gas hogs, but they've also been maintenance nightmares for us over the last few years. So those are out of our fleet completely now. Our office equipment line is increased to by about fifteen thousand dollars. This is for needed upgrades for our vehicle tablets and computers in the building. Uh, we, since we just replaced our last Windows ninety-eight operating machine, uh, because of the, uh, access control system that we had, we actually, believe it or not, were forced to replace it. And the thing just kept on chugging along, but I'm glad that we did. We do have a number of Windows two thousand machines still in us, in the building and, uh, we're moving toward an operating system. I believe it's Windows seven that Chuck Miller has recommended that we move toward right now to make sure that all of our systems are upgraded to the same operating platform. And also there's a new line here called operating equipment. Uh, this is a thirty-one thousand, seven hundred dollar increase to replace our department rifles and sidearms. Our sidearms and our rifles are aging and I believe our sidearms were replaced back in two thousand four. Two thousand seven. And, uh, we're looking at making sure that the equipment that our officers need to do the work that they do every single day, that the tools that they have are reliable and safe. And certainly when we get to a point where our armorers are looking at making minor tweaks and, and adjustments to the weapon systems that we currently use and we give our officers to use every single day, uh, it calls into question whether the, they're, they're gonna be as reliable as we would like them to be. And they're right about the right time where we would normally consider replacing them. So we're looking at replacing those as well. And that is it really, except for the, the POP unit proposal that Captain Dudash is gonna talk about in just a minute. If you'd like, we can go into that right now or we can talk about some of the things that I just spoke about regarding increases or, or decreases in the budget. It'd be strictly your preference.
Period. Time's over. Proved its worth. That was the whole reason why it wasn't put in there in the first place. And take the burden off of a volunteer organization, which is getting more difficult, uh, to take care of that and just plug in. Okay, I mean, whatever it is, I mean, I know there's been a lot of people who have donated services and equipment and all these other things and it's not that we're gonna turn them down, okay? But I think in fairness, you know, the, the, uh, unit has, the dog has proved his worth.
He certainly has.
Otherwise you wouldn't be talking about replacing them, I think. And, you know, uh, you know, when he, what is it, seven years is about the, the usual time then that he remains on duty and then after that, you, you know, you, you, you would retire him, so, anyway. That's what I, that's what I had suggested a year or two ago to, hey, it's time. You know, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's, you know, I don't know whether you share it or not, but, uh, you know, the whole hesitation about putting it in was the accusation that it wasn't gonna be worth it. Um, he wasn't gonna carry his weight and, uh, be of anything, it was just some fad that the chief wanted to get engaged in. And I think that that's, at this point, unnecessary. Dan?
To re, to reiterate your point, Tom, I think that if, Chief, you could just take a couple of minutes because that, this was the first time we had a dog unit, uh, and it was experimental and.
Way back. Yes, back in the eighties.
Well, the, okay, so it's corrected, but for a couple of decades, we didn't have any, so, okay. So it would, this was like, kind of like, uh, an experiment, let's see, we're gonna, we're gonna have a dog unit again. Um, let's see if it works and then if it does, I'm, I'm totally back your, uh, your idea on putting in the budget. But why don't you just briefly tell us, um, why has the dog program been such a success?
I'd like to turn it over to Captain Albert. He was instrumental in really getting our K nine program off the ground, uh, as was Captain Dudash. Pete has been actually overseeing the program and is intimately familiar with the successes and with the costs associated with the program.
Chief, thank you. I would agree with, uh, the chairman that, that, it, it's well overdue. The taxpayers have, uh, chipped in quite a bit of money, uh, regarding, uh, uh, Gunny. And, uh, I guess my evaluation of having overseen that unit for the last, uh, two to three years is that, uh, he's been very successful. He's been successful on the patrol aspect of it, um, and I've seen it personally. Uh, when that, when he's out there, when that dog is out there, uh, with Officer Walters, um, and we show up at certain aspects, there was actually, uh, for an example, we had a, um, large group of individuals fighting in a parking lot. And, um, when the truck, when the K nine truck rolls up with Gunny barking, it's amazing how quickly things calm down. He's helped out in a number of cases for missing people, missing and lost elderly and children. Uh, we had, uh, one woman, he helped out with, an elderly woman, uh, over at Coventry Court. And he was, assistance was valuable. Uh, we had a situation where a man was stealing, uh, some of, he was trying to steal some of the power equipment out in front of Tractor Supply and, uh, Gunny, um, although showed up at the scene afterwards, the individual fled on foot. Uh, Officer Walters was able to, after given a direction by the officer in which that individual fled, was able to follow the track and find the, the, um, evidence for this, this individual was using to, uh, break into this and steal this equipment, which we located, he had thrown in the course of a foot pursuit. So, I mean, that, that locked in, that helped lock in a conviction. There's been a lot of situations in which he has helped us. He's helped us also, um, in, uh, in drug searches. Uh, he's helped surrounding communities. He's been called, we've been called and asked for assistance there. As you know, we, we embrace community policing and having a K nine unit, um, is, it supports that incredibly. You know, Gunny is constantly performing K nine demonstrations at, at all the various, uh, uh, you know, um, venues we have, the Expo, Rib Fest, um, constantly going to scout meetings, uh, four H meetings, all the different civic groups. Um, he just, uh, he just embodies what we want for community policing for a K nine unit too. So, um, if there's anything more I can, I can give you on that, I guess I just can't say enough about the unit and how important he's been for us.
Thanks, I, I just, I wanted to, I wanted people to hear that too, that it, that Gunny didn't turn out to be just a PR, uh, move, uh, that bringing him to the schools and other, uh, things and that's was not, that's not the function. It's great that that's an added bonus to the community, but he's far from just a PR, uh, animal that we have in the department, so.
We've used him in numerous situations where we've found buildings broken into, um, and, uh, as opposed to having an officer go directly in, uh, you know, we'll announce the dog and the dog will check the building and make sure there's, uh, no one in there. It goes towards the officer's safety too. So there, there's all sorts, we've had all sorts of uses.
Thank you.
Phil?
Thank you. I support adding the, the line on and then for the, the K nine. I guess the question I would ask is, are we gonna, is it the preference of the police department to stick with the Belgians or? Belgian, he's a Belgian Malinois, is he not?
He's a German shepherd.
He's a German shepherd?
Yes.
Okay, I thought he was a Belgian. I guess, is there a preference between a German versus a Belgian or?
Uh, there, there's no particular preference. I mean, Greg now has had Gunny for five some odd years and, uh, he's, uh, you know, he loves the German shepherd. Uh, Gunny's performed well. I asked this question, um, there's not a huge difference in either, either dog, I guess, as we're getting closer. We just had, uh, Gunny, um, goes through training with Greg down in Boston, um, on a monthly basis. They train with their K nine unit down there along with several K nine units from around New England. And we asked to evaluate them, what their instructors thought. And they gave Gunny about, um, two more ye, two to four more years' service. Um, they think in, uh, they would, you know, and they, they'll watch him as he goes. But, uh, he's still, uh, very efficient in his building searches. He's physically, uh, well off and, uh, he's, uh, you know, he's, uh, very accurate with his drug searches.
Way back in the beginning when this first did come about, um, I believed what they were capable of doing. Uh, my concern was in the overtime budget because the dog is able to work with one person and I was wondering if you had an idea what type of, uh, impact that may have had for Officer Walters.
I don't have that number, Council Rothaus, but I can get you that.
I'd just be curious, uh, because I do believe the value of it.
Get you that, I know we tracked that. So, um, eh, again, and I, it comes out of the overtime budget, uh, overall, which I kinda scrutinize quite closely in the patrol division, so nothing unusual to date, but I can get you those numbers. I don't have them right in front of me.
Good, no, that'll be great. Thank you. Tom?
Thanks, to stay on that topic, um, in the budget here, you've added five thousand dollars as a supplement to the expenses for Gunny right now. I'm guessing that's not his annual expenses. If we were to take on Gunny completely in the budget, do we have any idea how much we're talking about? Either in an annual ongoing expense or in a replacement as Gunny retires and we go to get another dog? What kind of expenses would come up?
Please.
We've gotten, uh, we're somewhere around forty-five hundred, four thousand to forty-five hundred dollars a year in expenses for him.
That's it?
That, that's.
So the five thousand does cover his annual expenses?
It does. The only, the only bump was this year where we needed, we were doing the transfer of the K nine unit. We needed to transfer equipment over and replace new equipment for the, the seating and whatnot for Gunny. So that, uh, put a little bit of a deeper impact on the K nine line item. Uh, other than that, Captain Albert's right on money, which is about forty-five hundred dollars a year that we see for costs, veterinary costs, those kinds of things that would go along with him and his upkeep.
To, to say nothing of the overtime that Fenley was referring to, but is there any other associated expenses Officer Walters works with Gunny? Does he still, I mean, does he have a full day of work independent of, of that or sort of as a team or?
Yeah, it's a hybrid actually, um, and I, I wish I had brought it with me, but he actually works, I think, seven hours and fifteen or twenty minutes a day. And it's the additional forty minutes a day that is geared toward what we call K nine maintenance and he's responsible for cleaning out his car. He's the only one that uses that car, by the way, unless we need it for something in emergency, which is just as well. But he's responsible for cleaning the car, feeding the dog, grooming the dog, taking care of whatever it is that he needs to do at the end of his shift or prior to the start of his shift to get his, uh, his K nine up and running and/or retired for the rest of the evening.
So if one wanted to nitpick, you could say that extra forty minutes, uh, it could go against the cost of the dog in the department, right?
Yeah, we could actually, we could crunch that number for you too.
That would change the forty-five hundred quite a bit, I suspect, but.
It would.
And do you have any idea what, if we were gonna go out in a, in a process to acquire a new dog, what that acquisition cost is?
That's a good question.
And the, the numbers I'm seeing are between five and seven thousand dollars a dog.
Okay, plus there's a lot of training, right? Officer Walters was going out.
Yes, there's, uh, there's a significant, there's a twelve week training school that, uh, the dog would go to the academy.
But that takes the officer out as well, right?
That's correct.
And he's obviously paid to go to do that because that's not his own enhancements, that's the dog's enhancement.
It would be, in this case, like kinda when Greg and Gunny went, it was their, um, that, you know, we, it was his work week while he was in training. We just lost a body for a while.
Right.
Okay.
Phil?
Change tack or?
I don't know. What do you wanna do? Put your hand up.
Yes, I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The replacement of the sidearms, I know that you and Captain Albert were here a couple of months ago to talk about some sampling of, of an update to the Glock, is that correct? Is that what you're going to be looking to do? And is there any resale value of the service weapons that you're, um, retiring for the lack of a better word?
There is, Captain.
Uh, we, uh, we had our firearms instructors, we had five of our firearms instructors. We met with a representative from Glock who brought us the latest generation of the Glock. And, um, brought them through, uh, they all supported it, like, liked the weapon, liked its operation. Um, there was, uh, some significant improvements made, uh, on the, uh, on the handgun since Lieutenant Trepani's also a firearms instructor, uh, was present. And basically, um, we've also some statistics, the ballistics, uh, as far as we're gonna, we change over to, we're proposing to change over to a nine millimeter from a forty caliber, um, based upon statistics from the FBI saying that the stopping power is the same, is really negligible difference. Um, and, uh, the ammunition though is, uh, less costly and, um, we, we actually can have, we can, the weapon can hold more rounds in the nine millimeter. So we'd be, we're recommending go to nine millimeter. As far as cost wise, uh, we'd be looking at, um, a, uh, two hundred and fif, no, it was a two hundred dollar buyback on, was, Paul, was it two hundred on the handgun? Two twenty per weapon. Cost, cost overall was about four, was it four fifty? It was about, it was four hundred fifty, five hundred dollars per handgun, they quoted us in the various models, but we'd get a two hundred and twenty-five depending on, he gave us a list of, uh, salespeople we could use in this area. And part of the deal, whatever arrangement we would make, but Glock themselves said, uh, two fifty for us, two twenty-five.
So there's not gonna be a change in the ammunition?
Oh, there is.
Okay, so that explains the uptick in the budget item that you have for ammunition under operating supplies? Cause you're gonna have to get rid of the old. Because you're gonna have to get rid of the old ammunition for the old guns and replace it with new ammunition so that it's compatible with the new Glocks, is that correct?
And we've, I've discussed this with our firearms leader, Lieutenant Trepani, excuse me, Lieutenant Tarleton, and he and I discussed if this were to go through and become approved after April, we've already kind of managing the amount of ammunition we have for training purposes and the purchase of the new ammunition so that we could begin, there would have to be a retraining, it would be kind of like our standard annual training, but it'd be a retraining in the nine millimeter requalifications. And we're kind, we're kind of already preparing for that.
Has anybody communicated what the, what the new lifespan is for the new weapon that you're purchasing, the new Glock?
Again, it's about how often they get used with training and everything else, and so be looking about a seven to ten-year lifespan.
Okay. Three new vehicles, we sticking with, are they, are we sticking with the Charger?
The Interceptor.
The Interceptor, excuse me.
The Interceptor SUV.
Okay.
And Captain Albert was prepared to talk a little bit about why and what we're doing with the interceptors that we have in the fleet right now.
Okay.
Initially, we, we went with the Interceptor sedan. We found out that the sedan itself is a small vehicle, smaller backseat, smaller for the driver. And a number of our officers are larger people and it makes it a little tough for them to get in and out of, myself included. And what we found out was that the SUVs that are coming, that have come out are basically, it's the same vehicle, different body. It's the same engine, it's the same wheelbase, and the mileage varies, the SUV mileage goes from, goes sixteen to twenty-two in the SUV model and the sedan is eighteen to twenty-three in the sedan model. So, there's negligible difference in the gas, it's an all-wheel drive and a six, six-cylinder engine. So, it's much bigger, the passenger, the prisoner seat in back is much bigger. We found that we've had some, arrested some medium-sized to larger individuals and it's been very tight getting them in there. And so, this would make it easier, one, ergonomically easier for the officers to sit and drive in, and then also for loading and unloading prisoners.
They're not supposed to be comfortable, I was just gonna say that.
Additionally, our goal with the SUVs, we're gonna cycle out the existing interceptors that we have now, the older ones, the ones that are the big Crown Vics that we have sitting in the front lot, which are a maintenance horror show for us and they're really bleeding us dry when it comes to not only the gas issue, but the maintenance, because these cars have a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand miles on them. The SUVs that will be replacing the interceptors will, and the interceptors that are being replaced will be cycled into our administrative fleet. Those will be the cars that our detectives will be driving. And the beauty of that is that they'll have another four or five-year lifespan as detectives' cars or administrative staff cars.
Dan?
Back on the gun question, it occurred to me to ask, how many rifles are in inventory? And what are the models? And if you were, you're going to change to Glocks, same kind of question with the rifles, what's your current rifle and what's gonna be your new rifle?
Our Colt AR-15, same rifle? It's a, we currently have for rifle, the Colt AR-15 and there's, it's ten or twelve?
There is ten plus we have six army-issue AR-15, M-16s that are in inventory.
We have, yeah, so if you've heard the lieutenant.
If you could repeat it just for the public.
For the, yeah. Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, we have ten, ten AR-15s, Colt AR-15s, and we have six M-16s that were part of a, I guess, an equipment loan program, if you did call it that.
Surplus.
Yeah, equipment surplus program from the military from several years ago.
Thank you.
And you'll be replacing with what, the same model?
Yes.
Do we use the M-16s for anything?
We, we have, we've used them for rifle training, you know, at some points, you know, instead of taking all the rifles off the road, out of the cars, when we're training ten individuals, we end up like using some of the M-16s just so the officers can use the firing rifles. They fire the same rounds.
Okay.
Yeah, I was issued that forty-five years ago. I had one, yeah, M-16.
I think they were around in those days.
Yes, they were. Much to my chagrin, because I wanted the fourteen I had when I got there.
Twice the weight.
I don't care twice the weight, I wasn't moving around in the jungle.
It didn't jam, that's right.
That's right. It was easy to clean and it would stop something.
In the same vein with the handguns, lifespan similar on the rifles?
Yes, and the difference too in the rifles are the sightings, the sights are better. We can, the rifles we currently have, we can't upgrade the sights on these rifles. They're the old iron sights and they're fixed. The new rifles we purchase, we can, we can upgrade significantly the sights, which will significantly improve, you know, the sighting in and hitting your target accuracy. So, that ability in and of itself and talking to our firearms guys is worth the value.
Anything else?
I'm sure we'll come up with more, but you wanted to make a presentation on the POP thing?
That's correct, if, I was just gonna say, if it pleases the counsel, I can get right into that right now and turn it over to Captain Dudash.
Did you, did you have a handout by chance?
What's up?
Did, did you have a handout for this by chance? Oh, you didn't? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, gentlemen on the board, Eileen and Paul. Thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to give a presentation, for hoping that you can budget this specialized unit. In February two thousand and fourteen, Merrimack was ranked nineteenth safest city in America according to Neighborhood Scout. And recently, the town received a thirty-fourth ranking. But in the last four years, we received a top one-hundred ranking in the country as one of the safest cities in the country. I'm sure we're all proud of this accomplishment, especially since we're the only town or city in the state of New Hampshire to receive such an honor. Chief Doyle and our staff, along with a lot of our community partners, were given a lot of credit for receiving this recognition. As we all know, Merrimack is in the middle of a growth spurt and I believe Representative Boyd kind of mentioned some of the things that are going on in this, in the town. On top of everything, we're located between two major highways and two major cities, both Nashua and Manchester. Both Manchester and Nashua, if you've been reading the papers, are dealing with increasing crime and especially dealing with the epidemic of heroin. Manchester is now considered part of what we call the Triangle, which includes Worcester, Massachusetts, Lawrence, Mass., and Manchester. And as you know, crime has no boundaries and especially no borders. June fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, Merrimack premium outlets opened up to thousands of people annually. At the time, this honorable board asked Chief Doyle and the staff if the present staffing levels would be adequate for such a major attraction and the potential ripple effect that could follow after. At the time, the chief stated he would like to take a wait-and-see approach. It's been three years now. Although the department's handling most of the issues that we're confronted with the mall, as you can see in our annual reports reported to you guys for the past three years, we've had approximately fourteen hundred calls in two thousand and twelve, thirteen hundred calls in two thousand and thirteen, as of December fourteen, we dropped to about fourteen hundred calls. And that's just the mall. Construction for Phase Two is reported to start very soon, which would start and add calls to our service. The problem's not just facing us through the mall, but also what we call the southeast and west quarters are patrol units. There are many other projects that have been completed and are gonna be in the works very soon. And I'd like to get to that slide real quick. Yep.
Yes.
When you say fourteen hundred calls to the mall, does that include your directed patrols as well?
That will include some of our direct patrols. That'll include also our assistance to medical calls, the fire department, including every variety of type of presence that we have up there, but it does include our direct patrols.
Because I think it would be more accurate to state how many calls for assistance that you receive. I know that, that you do the directed patrols, which is kind of a preventive thing, but.
Right, and I can get that number for the, for the board and everything. But as you can see, the projects have a direct impact, and as Mr. Boyd mentioned, we got the project that's located up in the north end, which includes the Flatley Program. Going back about a year ago, a representative or a consultant representing the Flatley property met with Chief Doyle and myself, and according to the study made by his company, he stated that it could have the impact of two officers alone for the size of that project. I think the big thing, as I started to mention, is that, you know, I mentioned Manchester having a epidemic with heroin. It's not just Manchester, it's Nashua and every surrounding community we have. And this is kind of a shocking number that a lot of people don't know, and when I mentioned it throughout the community, we've had nine overdose deaths in this town in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen connected to heroin. We've had over fifty overdose-related calls besides those nine in the past two years related to heroin. To investigate this type of cases, you need a very dedicated skilled officer. At this point right now, we have our detectives that we pull off their investigations to look at it, look at the scene, process the scene, but what it comes down to, a lot of them don't have the skill set. You really need a real, you need a drug background. You need somebody who's, has had investigations and drug, drug investigations, have maybe worked with the New Hampshire Attorney Drug Task Force, has had the proper schooling. But right now, we have our detectives, they do a great job, but they handle a lot of things. They handle things outside of the town, outside of the city, they handle a lot of things that go along with thefts and other type of related crimes. What we're finding is off is basically more reactive than proactive. When you take the nine deaths that we've, that I just mentioned, I think one of them led to an arrest, but there's eight others that have gone pretty much unclear. And somewhere along the way, somebody's child has been lost and we haven't been able to have any answers to them of who supplied the heroin to them. And this POP unit would help us with that. The staffing of the police department is a continuous challenge and one that becomes more complex in recent years. The two thousand and eight recession has created difficulties for law enforcement to fund additional officers. This department has done its best to be creative and innovative in the use of manpower, but the old cliche of Robin Peter to pay Paul is not productive. And what I mean by this, it's been going on for many, many years and we do our best, but basically what happens a lot of times is when the detectives need help, we pull somebody from patrol to help them out. And it could be the officer that we feel is best for the situation, but sometimes it's not. So, what happens now is now you're taking a guy from the patrol and you put him in detectives and it's just not productive at all. At the same time, we sometimes are taking detectives and letting them to patrol when they need, need help too. So, basically what's happening is that the whole thing sometimes just falls apart and overall, the continuity of the operation sacrifices, not counting that the use of overtime comes into play in the skill set of the officer. For many years, the staff has looked at the future and closely analyzed our staffing levels in efforts to address all concerns of the community. Presently, the Merrimack Police Department has thirty-eight full-time officers, if I can get to that sling. What I'm showing you here right now, basically back in nineteen eighty, I got hired in eighty-one, we had twenty-four full-time officers. In two thousand, we jumped up to thirty-eight guys. In two thousand and ten, we're up to forty, and this is where we look as of today. And you can see forty officers in two thousand and ten, thirty-eight. And the big thing, at one point, we had part-time officers to kind of augment our, our department and now we're going with strictly on full-time officers. The department lost a detective position due to budget cuts a few years ago. We also exchanged one of our positions for an attorney to be on staff to handle the complexity of the criminal justice system. This position was correctly needed, but another sworn officer was lost to gain advantage in the courtroom. The increase of three officers to this unit would be highly advantageous, not just to the department, but to the community. The Merrimack Police Department sees the need to increase our manpower for several reasons, and this proposal hopefully shows why. There is a need for additional officers on the street, along with more investigators to handle the caseload and particularly the type of calls we're starting to experience. Recently, we started, started monitoring and tracking our mental health calls. It's getting to a point besides, you know, handling the heroin calls that we've been talking about, but the number of mental health calls has really skyrocketed. I think a one shift alone, we handled four suicidal people within about a two-hour period, four different calls. Again, the help of a POP unit would help us out quite a bit with things like this. The police department's not naive nor insensitive to the fact that this country is still struggling from the recession from the early two-hundred, two thousands, and we know that we must always remain physically responsible. We like, versus basically the tax load to be put on the people. We always will be financial responsible, responsible to the needs of the people, will not ask for such an increase if we didn't feel it was appropriate. The department has taken a deep look at how to satisfy the need for additional officers. The staff has put their heads together and we've come up with this new idea, which is kind of a hybrid officer called a POP unit. And basically what a POP unit is, it's not a detective and he's not a patrolman, but what it is, is a person that's kind of in the middle, that would be assigned under the operations captain, which is Captain Albert right now, and he would do many things. This unit would work together from being responsive to motor vehicle needs, for example of, you know, intersections that, you know, people are going through red lights or blocking up intersections that we need to address certain areas for traffic enforcement. This unit also would be used to help collect evidence at crime scenes, also be given cases to help out with heroin overdoses. So, this unit would be quick and responsive. A specialized team of three officers would also be led by a sergeant, and the reason for that is the importance of supervisory oversight. The city of Nashua started a program back in nineteen ninety-seven, and speaking with their lieutenant in charge of their unit, he said they reaped a lot of benefits, including drug seizures and able to quickly handle problems that come up quickly instead of dismantling the patrol division or detectives. As you know, I've mentioned about the heroin problem, drug investigations need a minimum of two officers in most cases and sometimes three. These cases take sometimes days, sometimes weeks, and sometimes months to investigate. Currently, we have three criminal investigators in the detective unit, along with a juvenile officer overseen by Detective Lieutenant Denise Roy. They average fifteen cases at a time, that's what they're handling. And they're stretched very thin, the majority of the time you see them, they're out of town or sometimes out of state, as I mentioned. As I mentioned, the POP unit will, is designed to wear many hats. They'll be trained and specialized in drug investigations, intelligence gathering, sophisticated organized retail criminals. As you know, we have the mall and the outlet and we have already come in contact with people from, in the sophisticated crime area. This unit will also participate in our bike officer program, our OHRV program. For example, there's a lot of problems up Horse Hill Nature Preserve and also behind the middle school. So, this unit would be trained to go up into the woods with the OHRV with no use of any manpower or taking guys from the street, so they'll be able to handle their calls. This unit will be used to replace officers that have called out sick, to avoid, and hopefully avoid the use of overtime. The POP unit is also used to take a very proactive approach on things instead of being reactive and hopefully would be a benefit to the town and the community. I just want to show a slide right here from calls for two thousand and fourteen. As you can see, we handled approximately thirty-five thousand calls in that year, and we put that into the number of officers that are currently working, which is thirty-eight, that's nine hundred and forty-one calls. And we put that into the number of officers that are currently working, which is thirty-eight, that's nine hundred and forty-one calls. The closest person, department to us that I would say that's demographically set up like Merrimack is Hudson. You can see they had thirty-one thousand calls, and that's roughly six hundred and fifty-nine calls per officer. When you get to officers per thousand, we've always been on a low scale. And again, I'd just like to look at the highlight, and you'll see Hudson PD, been a population of twenty-four thousand, pretty close to Merrimack. They have forty-seven sworn officers. We have thirty-eight. Again, we have Derry, thirty-three thousand, fifty-three officers. Dover, thirty-three thousand, forty-six officers. London Dairy has the airport, so they have sixty-two officers in control, twenty-four thousand people. Befford, twenty-one thousand people, thirty-eight officers. But approximately about ten, twelve years ago, they're at up somewhere around eighteen officers. Their population is pretty close to doubled, and I'm not counting their commercial. This is basically some numbers that I got received from Paul, breaking down the cost of the three officers. As you can see, there's a mass patrolman, it's times two. So you would see a base of sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, but you'd have to multiply that by two. But it comes down to, it's two mass patrolmen that would be assigned to this unit, along with a sergeant for supervisory oversight. Somewhere around three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars would be the cost or added to the budget for the cost of this unit per year. I've already gone over pretty much what the POP unit does. Again, they're not undercover officers, but there's somebody in the middle, the kind of a hybrid thing that can help out patrol when they need help. And they help out detectives when the detectives need it. And again, basically, we've been for many, many years, taking guys out of patrol to help the detectives when we need them. And it comes down to the guys just don't have the proper skill set sometimes to help out detectives. And at the same time, we take a lot of guys out of detectives who are working on cases and assign them to patrol for a week or two weeks to help out. And again, it's just, it's right at a point now in the police department, we just can't keep doing that. Again, you know, we're the thirty-fourth safest community, and hopefully we want to keep that going. Any questions?
Questions, Bill?
Yeah, Captain Dudash, thank you very much for the presentation, I appreciate it. Can I get a copy of that presentation?
Yes, we'll provide a copy to all the members of the council.
I appreciate it. Can you take a look at Rochester? And I only bring up Rochester because I think they have the same population or pretty darn close to what we have here in Merrimack. And the spatial area as well is the same. The dynamic might be a little bit different. I think Dover's right on because you've got the Turnpike in Dover, so I think Dover's a little bit more. But I'm just curious to know where we're at, because when I'm looking at data, I try to, I think Merrimack and Rochester have the, from a demographic perspective, are pretty darn close, both in terms of budget, in terms of population. That to me, I think I'd be curious.
I think we do have the Rochester number, I think we took that out for some reason.
Fair enough, fair enough. Are they going to be, is the POP unit going to be, I don't know what the word is, but are they going to have enforcement capacity to arrest? And are they going to carry a piece and...
No, they are policemen.
So they're going to be police officers?
Police officers, basically, it's kind of a hybrid thing. We would select probably three of the best policemen that we have. And the guys that are teachable, we can get them to the schools that they gotta get to. Guys that are pretty much, I don't want to use the word aggressive, but guys that are very responsive to the needs of the community. So when something comes up, you know, such as a crime scene, I mean, right now, we have our detectives, you know, securing the scenes, taking the photographs, doing the diagramming, sometimes takes hours and hours and hours. This POP unit, for example, just one of the things they would do is they'd be trained in how to, you know, photography, how to do diagrams, and, you know, basically doing all the crime scene investigations, allowing the detectives to move on to the crime and try to catch who really did it.
So you're gonna look to put your, your goal would be to hire internally and then replace the three slots that you're losing with external hires? Maybe somebody fresh out of Franklin Pierce, Anna Maria, with their BS in criminal justice, that kind of thing? And kind of like what we heard from Chief Curry tonight, train them in the Merrimack way of community policing.
Correct.
So it's more, so... I hate to use the term NCIS of Merrimack, but it's kind of like an NCIS kind of special task force kind of thing that you want to...
It is, it's just a unit that can quickly respond to what they are responding to. I mean, right now, for example, if it's, they might respond to like, it could be a problem on the back of a road for speeding motor vehicles. We get calls, you know, on a daily basis, hey, somebody's speeding too fast on the back of a road or wire road. And we'll send a cruiser up there, but sometimes that cruiser gets pulled off within minutes. And you really don't get the attention. And I don't know how many times I've had somebody call up and say, I think you just put the cruiser out there just to satisfy my, you know, my call. But we try to tell them, we tried to put him up there, but we gotta pull him off because he works a sector. And we basically have the same four sectors since I've been around, since nineteen eighty-three. We've got four sectors, and this unit could be turned around by saying, you know, there's a problem on back of a road or wire road. For the next, you know, week, you're gonna work two to three hours a day on running radar. So I don't want to just say they're gonna be like an undercover operation. They're gonna be able to handle anything from, you know, motor vehicle related stuff to, you know, crime scenes to, for example, what really spurred this up was really our heroin overdose problem. We just don't seem to have enough time or enough guys to really investigate that. And it's just a trend that's happening, you know, not just in Merrimack, but Manchester, Nashua, when it comes to heroin. We just need to spend more time on that stuff. And, you know, a POP unit would be perfect to be handling that stuff. And they would work with other agencies, like Nashua's POP unit, and hopefully be able to get the job done.
So based on the data that you presented, is this really in response to some of the behavioral ills? I mean, are we seeing in this community, are we seeing an uptick? Like you talked about mental health, we talk about heroin overdose. I'm waiting to hear crystal meth. I mean, I'm waiting to hear, you know, things that are what I would term behavioral in nature as opposed to, you know, and I don't mean to sound cavalier, but, you know, you're telling me that, you know, the Crips are in town, so...
Well, with growth, like we spoke, and I think we talked a little bit about it when the fire department was up here, we talked a little bit about some of those challenges that are going to be moving forward. We have apartment complexes that are coming into town, you know that those bring a host of challenges. And the calls for service aren't going to go away, they're going to increase, it's just the nature of the beast. Right now, what we're looking at is, is we're, I think, for the most part, the town of Merrimack gets great value for their public safety dollar. If you broke down with the per capita law enforcement service cost would be for every person in town, it's about two hundred and twenty-two dollars, which is on the very low end. But I think the value is extremely high. We want to keep it that way. And really, the only way to keep it that way is not become a reactive police department. That is the danger of any, and the failure of any police department is to sit back on the laurels and say, well, we've been pretty good this far and, you know, we don't have to do anything more than what we're doing right now. However, the dynamic in the community changes so much, and we talk a little bit about the heroin issue, and that's a regional issue. You can't arrest your way out of that. That means forming partnerships and working as teams, together with not only other law enforcement agencies, but community-based treatment centers and other folks that have the inroads as to what needs to be done to address the problem. Our POP unit is going to be part of that solution, not just for the heroin problem either. We talked a little bit about the traffic issue that so-and-so may have in their neighborhood. And you're right, we do, we try to address it, but it's becoming a problem where we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. We've got to now allocate a resource out there to do the job that needs to be done. And we can't turn a blind eye to it, nor would we ever, because everybody deserves that level and quality of service. However, we want to do it right. We don't want to just placate people and put a Band-Aid on something, on something that could become a larger problem if we don't remain proactive in addressing it. We talk a lot about the mall and how many calls for service we have at the mall, and whether a lot of those, the lion's share of those are our direct patrols. Our direct patrols since two thousand and nine were up a hundred and eighty-five percent, in no short order because of the calls for service we're having at the mall and the DPs we have up there. And I think it's a success story that we don't have the level of crime that other towns have seen with the influx of the mall traffic that those other towns or communities have. It's because of the hard work our officers do, remaining as proactive as they are. That's a beautiful thing, again. However, when they're there doing their thing proactively, something else may be slipping by on the other end or somewhere else in town where we need to address. And we're on the doorstep right now of a lot of growth in town, a huge amount of growth potentially, not only in town, but in the region. And with that growth brings those challenges, and I don't want to say problems, that could be looked at as opportunities as well. And here's an opportunity for the police department to remain forward-thinking and put some people in place to be able to address those specific issues that our patrolmen don't have the time to do and our detectives don't necessarily have the time and resources to do. They're a hybrid. They act in a way that no other police officer does right now, other than what we try to do on an ad hoc basis. We have an issue, we try to grab a couple of patrolmen to work with, maybe one of our detectives to address a problem, but it's a short-term thing. And we may see some successes, but right now, we're looking at potential issues moving forward in terms of the growth that we're going to be addressing over the next two to five years, right here in Merrimack.
I think the projected density that you have at Flatley and Edgebrook alone, I think, and I give you and your staff a lot of credit for thinking about that, especially the, just the two office alone that Captain Dudash talked about as it relates to the Flatley property. Was that anecdotal as it relates to the Flatley property down in Nashua at Royal Crest? Because that's pretty much in line with what he's trying to contemplate in bringing to, I mean, not saying verbatim, but that type of facility he's looking at at the north end.
Insofar as the actual design and layout, I'm not sure, but he did use that as a reference. It says some other developments around the area as a reference as to why he thought that there would be an impact based upon what our calls for service are now and what kind of impact that had in that city.
And we got the same thing from, we got the same thing from the outlets. Okay, it was supposed to be three officers and one and a half support. And plus the four, I don't know, whatever it was, okay? So I mean, and he's giving you examples from other places. And then you tell me we have a drug problem, and the school district's had a grant for how long to try and deal with this stuff?
Six years.
And it doesn't look like it's working, does it?
Well, I hate to paint the entire region with a broad brush when it comes to the drug problem, but we're all dealing with that. It's not just right here in Merrimack.
I understand that. But this was supposed to be something that was going to try and mitigate some of that, and it's not. I think to a degree, it is working. The resource officer in the school, I do believe that it's working. I think it is a problem that is coming into our town like it is others, as the chief just pointed out. But I don't think we're doing all we can do, and you know that, I've chatted with you about that specifically, and the chief as a matter of fact. So I think some of the failing is coming with organizations within our town. That being said, what I would like to know at some point, and I don't expect you to have it tonight, is I'd like to know the age of the deaths of those folks who overdosed on heroin.
I have that stat, I can get that to you. The average age is, really the minimum age is somewhere around twenty-one, twenty-two to about thirty-one is the age of these individuals. But I am, I can get that to you.
Okay. And it is a real problem because it is so cheap and so on. I've also always believed in a strong police department because my brother-in-law, who used to be in Nashua, went from Litchfield to Nashua, was a big change for him. But he, in fact, pointed out a number of years ago that the gang-related crime problem and so on was growing substantially, coming up from Lawrence, no offense to our sisters to the South. But it was a real problem, and I don't want that to ever be a problem in Merrimack. And it would have a more difficult time, I believe, because of the way we lay out compared to the city and all that. But still, those are things that always concern me. This is something that's interesting, I have a lot of thought that I have to put into it. But I think, I sit on a Merrimack safeguard as a liaison to that group, which was put together because of that grant that we received from the federal government. And I don't know, I'm off on a tangent, I apologize. I'm just, I get frustrated over this issue because of certain perceived lax of effort in our town, and it bothers me immensely.
Just to let you know, you know, Chief Doyle's actually given me the assignment for this year to look into how we can work with everybody to try to fix this. Not, it's gonna be tough to fix it, but look into it, see what we can do more with. Actually, Lieutenant Roy's part of that program.
We actually included it as part of our annual report, some of the things that we have on the horizon about what we're going to do to address it in the community-wide forum, on TV, in a forum, questions and answers, bringing folks in from these community-based treatment facilities to talk a little bit what it is that they can do to recognize the issue if they have, God forbid, a loved one that's dealing with that problem, and what they can do to point them in the direction of getting some valid viable resources for them. There's a lot happening out there that we want to make sure we're tapping into. In New Hampshire, as you think you know, without getting too far off the subject, community-based treatment facilities are few and far between when it comes to drug addiction, generally speaking. And what we need to do is be able to look for other resources that are available to folks when they have people that they need to point in that direction. Unfortunately, we're no different. But we have to work with our community partners to make sure we're identifying what those issues are so folks know where to turn when they have a problem, they don't just think that they have nowhere else to turn, which is something that we're finding right now.
I'll just, real quick, I think you mentioned, Mike, that there's a possibility of saving overtime. And with this group where, you know, their workload might ebb and flow to where they are just sitting with a radar, which I'd rather not see that if we're going to be doing something with this group. But do you really see that as an opportunity of possibly cutting some of the overtime out of our budget?
Absolutely. And the reason being is because as a POP unit, they're not going to be scheduled into the regular rotation with the officers in the patrol division. So when we identify areas that they need backfilling or staffing, we're going to be able to, notwithstanding they have other assignments or whatever, we'll be able to move those into those positions so that would augment the staffing and reduce the overtime costs because we wouldn't have to pay with an overtime shift.
Yep, thanks, Chief.
Dan?
I may come off a little bit of a tangent on a soapbox, so I'm gonna ask for a few minutes of time. Because I have studied this for a while, this season with the budget, and I have a lot to say about it, so I'm very opinionated on it. Just to go over some numbers for everybody here, but more people for at home on what we're dealing with on our budget. And in the end, when you're asking for three men, that affects the budget a huge amount, especially when we're talking about almost, you know, three to four hundred thousand dollars in new communication equipment that's coming our way. But overall, when you look at the police budget, it's five point six million dollars. I really don't, that number's a little deceiving because the communications department is a component that can't be denied, which is almost a million dollars. So you're nine hundred thousand on the communications budget. So in reality, our police budget is six point five million dollars. And again, I'm just gonna talk in broad numbers, so the police budget's six five million, six point five million dollars. Just five years ago, it was four million something. So five years ago, we still had a very similar amount of population in town. If we were to add the three police officers today, plus the communications equipment, we're really looking at a very, within a very short time, two to three years, we are going to be at a seven million dollar budget for police. Fire's close behind at around six. So we're really, we're approaching numbers that are well over forty percent of our total budget is just fire and police. That being said, those are the numbers that we're dealing with. How can we enhance our police department, which has been on a hiring freeze basically for the last few years? We're thirty-eight men, been at thirty-eight men for quite some time. The drugs, some of the biggest drug pushers in America, now here's my soapbox, are guys in white coats with PhDs. You've had back surgery for three years and you're still on OxyContin. The OxyContin pill on the street's sixty bucks. It doesn't take a rocket science why people from all ages have turned to heroin. So we have a pharmaceutical drug problem in America, which no town, no city's gonna fix in probably my lifetime. So that goes without saying, a lot of Americans just like to get high, period. And they're gonna get high the cheapest way they can, and the drug of choice right now is heroin. As we all know, we can read the paper, it just happened a couple of days ago, again, once a week, is twenty-something-year-old kids dead suddenly at home. You know, when they, code words are when they're not surrounded by their loving family or been sick for a long period of time, you can exactly point right away what it is. And it happens all the time. I know the numbers that you speak of nine people in Merrimack over the last couple of years that are dead because of drugs. So I want to support your police department, our police department. I would, and then as I'm speaking, obviously, I'm always a salesperson for the rest of my council, so when I'm talking, I'm hoping I'm gonna get some votes down the line on the budget for the philosophy that I'm trying to preach here. I do not want to manage a POP team. I do feel that we have... I do not want to manage a pop team. I do feel that we have to get you some more manpower. How you manage that is up to you, which I always would say, I'm not trying to micromanage the police department. But I would be in favor of adding a man this budget season, add another man, have a plan, a two- or three-year plan that we add three to four police officers, so by the year 2018, we're up to a forty-two-man force, a forty-three-man force. I'm definitely in support of that. However, I got to keep in mind that all you distinguished people in this room may not be here in three to four years. So we have an aging police force too in management, not so much in the regular patrol guys. But we need to have your successors from the patrol ranks, which in the next three to four years is going to happen automatically as well. So we have a very, we have a great police department. We have a department that's going to be in transition from management of retiring, and hopefully some of the younger guys are going to be stepping into your shoes. So as that transition places, maybe it's a man and a half every twelve months. As that new guy puts in his papers, he knows he's leaving, that's when you call the academy, call whatever, that another guy's coming up to back up his place six months prior before him leaving. So maybe we put on three guys in the next twenty-four months. But to budget and to help out all our taxpayers without having to come up with three hundred-plus grand, because that's what it costs to put on three police officers. And for the people back home, to the numbers, because I thank you again for a great budget, because it does make you cut through. When we have, when I quoted six point five million dollars, sorry, five point six million dollar budget for the police, without counting communications, health in, in health insurance is six hundred eighty-two thousand. Pension retirement is eight hundred thousand. So I mean, people at home have to realize that between health and pension, we're at a million and a half dollars when the whole wage package comes under, just under over five million. So five million dollars for wages and benefits, and of that, a million and a half is for pension and health. These numbers aren't decreasing. Those numbers are, that's why I'm afraid of approaching that seven million dollar police department, and maybe afraid's the wrong word, it's just, it's just life, everything's going to go up. And if we hire more police officers, which are apparently are needed, and I can support that idea, but trying to pile three guys on at the same budget year, to me, just is a little too difficult. So I would rather have a better plan of knowing that within the next three years, you're going to increase your department's manpower by something that we can all live with. That's it, thank you.
What's the equipment cost going to be for this? Is that in that slide that you had on there?
No, no, there would be nominal costs associated with clothing, jackets, boots, those kinds of things.
They're going to walk?
Pardon?
They're going to walk? Are they going to walk?
Oh, no, 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 not at all. This is something that's manageable enough that we could use equipment. When you're talking about cruisers and the like, we can use existing cruisers and the like to make sure that they're available to do whatever it is that they need to do. And there would be no impact, at least as far as vehicles and that kind of overarching expenditure.
But then you're going to have the maintenance and operation, the operation and maintenance expense of running those vehicles more, potentially more than they are now.
That's correct.
Thing that concerns me, okay, is these acronyms you throw on this stuff and the description you're talking about in here. You're talking about something that is very broad in scope in terms of their duties and responsibilities. But at the same time, you're talking about things that get me to keep thinking that this is going to somehow turn into some kind of an elite unit. You give it an acronym, you want a certain mental set in there, and I'm not arguing with that, okay? Those sorts of things, and that, you know, has the look of something like they will take themselves to be some kind of an elite unit, and over time, they take liberties, okay? And, you know, so it concerns me a little bit. If they're going to be doing regular police work, then they're regular police work. You don't have to give them a name or an acronym. You guys are going to do this. That's what we're hiring you for, is to do this, okay?
Because I buy into your manpower concerns. I can buy into it, I can see, I can see the mall calls. We know they're there, we can see the housing that's approaching. So I can definitely support you with that idea. But like Tom's concern, the pop thing, maybe I can't understand it enough. Maybe I have more faith in you in managing the forty men. And you'll put them where you need them, and you don't need that special piece in order to do that part. But I hear you loud and clear. I can understand where you're coming from. So how do we, how can we make it work in a budget, in a budget framework that kind of doesn't hurt everybody financially? And you hate to, but this is what this is about tonight, right? It's budget. And so we hear from the school department, some numbers coming up their way, and, you know, a million dollar increase, and, you know, people are going to get their tax bills and they're going to see a three hundred dollar increase. If nothing changes right now, that's what's on the horizon, not from us, from the town side, but just the school side. They're looking at a three hundred dollar increase. You couple that with this type of investment, and we are approaching, you know, well over a million dollars on both sides. Before you know it, the taxpayer's going to get an eight hundred dollar bill increase over the year, and boy, people, that's a lot.
That's the price of growth, Council.
That's...
I'm being, I'm being very honest, it's the price of growth. I mean, this is, this is, this is what we're seeing right now.
Maybe it is, maybe it is, and then, you know, the public will have a weigh-in on that. I think the approach can be done in a more of a step manner, and that's what hopefully we can do to help you out.
I see exactly what you're saying, and I understand what Chairman Mahan's concerns are as well. And you're absolutely right, the lot of resources that we have when it comes to total manpower in the police department is allocated predicated upon a need and information and data that we glean from our division commanders and our staff. And notwithstanding the pop unit idea and the acronym and maybe some of the ideals that go along with having that acronym hang over somebody's head and what it might stand for, the bottom line is, you're right, they're still policemen. I think that was Councilor Boyd's concern as well at the beginning. So these are folks that are going to be policemen. They'll be policemen in a uniform, and they're going to be working shift work when they need to work shift work. When, what we're doing right now is putting together these ad hoc pop units for the issues relative to the counterfeiting problem that we had at the mall, for example, or the tagging problem that we had at the mall, or the drug problem that we were dealing with when we had three overdoses in one month. We take people, put them together. They're not all detectives, they're not just all patrolmen, but they may be a few that we have that have specialized training or insight as to what those issues are. So what we do is we give them the opportunity to work the issue and work the problem. That becomes our pop unit, if you will. In a manner in which you're suggesting, as opposed to a large bite at the apple right up front and phasing it in over time, we'll still be doing the exact same thing. We're still going to, but we're going to have the flexibility of having that initial officer earlier, and maybe two officers earlier than we would have otherwise had, had we not had anybody to use. And it goes toward making sure that our manpower complement is up to a point where we're being able to render the service that's necessary, whether it's a patrol division officer at the time, or whether he's been resourcefully allocated and specially assigned to work another problem in town, whether it's a criminal mischief problem or a drug-oriented issue that we need to address. But we've got that person, and that's really kind of the bottom line of this proposal as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
No problem. So the overtime question and the transportation question that I had have been brought up, and I appreciate your response to that. What kind of a schedule are you looking at? You talked about this unit working together and whatnot. Would this be a day shift unit or something like that, or?
Well, by contract, they'd be restricted to a four-and-two work week. They wouldn't be detectives, detectives have a different work week altogether. But they would work a four-day-on, two-day-off work week. And they would be able to adjust their hours through mutual agreement with the chief of police or his designate and the employee themselves pursuant to the wording of the contract. So if there were issues that came up where we necessitated to move folks around or otherwise, we have that flexibility with them.
Four-and-two is ten-hour shifts, or?
No, no, eight hours.
Four, eight-hour shifts?
Mm-hmm.
But the idea would be that these three would work at the same time roughly?
That's correct.
As opposed to bringing in an additional man on each shift, or something like that, which has been talked about in the past. If we're going to bring in people, we should bring in one on each shift so we get full coverage. Of course, that's, the fire department says that all the time, but...
Yeah, we actually, without getting too sidetracked, we actually look at our calls for service by day, by time, where the calls are happening, when we allocate the people. We have less people on our day shift than we do on our evening or late-night shift, and especially in that chunk where there's an overlap between eight o'clock at night and two o'clock in the morning, for example. So we like to put our officers where they're needed the most. Unfortunately, because they're on a four-and-two, it becomes even more difficult, more challenging to get them on the days they're needed. But we like to say that two-thirds of the week, we're right on the money.
Okay, thank you.
So where are you going to find these new officers? Because the last time I was involved, the labor pool is very thin.
Well, it's funny you should say that because we're actually in the process of looking for two officers right now to fill vacant spots that we have that were recently vacated because we had two officers move on to other occupations. So the challenge with law enforcement is recruitment and retention. And what is it that we can do to better recruit and find qualified people? And once we get them and we devote a lot of time and money into their training, how do we hang on to them? There are a lot of philosophies out there about what we can do, and one of the things that Lieutenant Trepani, Captain Dudash, and Lieutenant Roy are working on right now as we speak is a recruitment plan. And it involves having several of our officers in the patrol division work as recruiters. And they're going to be going around to the schools, they're going to be going around to job fairs, career days, and that kind of thing in our local, I say a local, but statewide, and even across the border in Massachusetts, colleges to get the word out that Merrimack is hiring and show those folks what the opportunities are for a patrolman walking in the front door. And let them know that because we're in an interesting position where we're not the large department, where there were a boatload of opportunities for folks, but we're in a decent-sized department where we have opportunities available for people to become professionally developed and do the best that they can and know that they're going to be supported by the staff with the level of training and expertise that they need to do the job. They're going to want to stay here for a long, long time. So we'll see a return, hopefully, knock on wood, a return on our investment in those folks in short order. It's a challenge, not only here in Merrimack, it's a challenge everywhere, and every other department's working it. The pool is full, or is shallow, and it becomes even more problematic. And it's not so much that there's not a lot of interest out there. We get a lot of interest. We get forty, fifty, sixty people to come for testing when we have a single position open. It's getting that qualified person. Our standards...
No, your standards are where they ought to be.
Yes, we will never compromise our standards.
Where they ought to be, it's just, you know, just trying to get that mix-and-fit piece that you need to get the right person to come in here.
It really is a nationwide challenge. Recruitment and retention for law enforcement officers is a nationwide challenge.
There's not enough cop shows on TV anymore. Don't have Angie Dickinson running around, you know? All right, anybody else? Lon?
I guess I'm intrepid enough to try it. I'm not, I'm not speaking for or against, but I hark back to Councilor Mayans' query about eliteness only because in my understanding of the way you have your force organized and sectored and patrols and so on, I'm having trouble with the efficiency of the effort of your pop unit. It doesn't seem to fit for me with the way you have things laid out at the present time. Am I missing something?
I'm not sure what your question is. If you're talking about supervisory oversight, I mean, you're going to have, first of all...
I'm talking about, you have a unit, you've assigned them, or not assigned them, but you've made, you've provided them with special training in...
If I can jump in here real fast, Councilor.
Call me on, Pete, thanks.
And I think, I don't want to get caught up in the name, Problem-Oriented Policing Unit, which I feel like maybe we are a little bit. In Councilman Mahan, you mentioned an elite unit. What we'd be looking at is, as a pop unit, we're looking at, like the captain said, a sergeant to supervise the unit and two patrolmen. Now, these individuals we would want that have shown skills and the ability to do certain things, like they've shown the ability to interview or interrogate, or they've shown a skill towards surveillance, things like that, that, you know, not all of our officers possess, but some of these individuals would. So we might tap them to be in this unit. Now, this is a problem-oriented policing unit. So what we're looking at is they're going to be policemen, but what's the problem? Well, that's to be determined. If they're, if we're getting, and we've had in the past, numerous calls from neighbors about suspicions of an individual in their neighborhood who were drug dealing. Well, currently, what we have to do now is, well, we take from patrol maybe, an officer, and we take from detectives, a detective, which restricts both those units, and we try and assign them to maybe work on this particular investigation. Whereas if we have this problem-oriented policing unit, we have these three individuals that the operations commander can say, "Look, we're getting numerous calls. This is a quality-of-life issue for this neighborhood. It's a nuisance, there's people coming and going, it's a concern." Now, these three individuals would be involved in possibly beginning an investigation on who's at this house, what's going on, beginning, taking the time for a surveillance or anything like that. And it wouldn't just be drug units, a drug investigation. It could be a quality-of-life issue for, let's say you have a group of individuals in a neighborhood who are just causing problems for those individuals, you know, for that neighborhood. You could have that unit assigned out, whether it's, you know, graffiti, whether it's, you have a particular, I don't want to say, a particular place in town that might be selling to minors. You could use those individuals for that type of problem. You could use it for, you had an intersection, they could be, they don't have to be in plainclothes all the time. These individuals would be targeted towards a, let's say you had a particular intersection where, much like 101A caught in at the ballpark, we've had numerous accidents here, most recently had a fatal there. A red light was involved. You could use these individuals for that particular directed patrol, to spend some time out there for enforcement, things like that. These issues, they do a, they do a number of different types of investigation. And as far as eliteness, they, yeah, one, we'd want to train them in, if they were involved in, one, knowing how to do certain things, like collecting evidence and photography and, you know, the proper ways to do surveillance. And that sergeant, like most of our sergeants, already has those skills and can teach those skills. And yeah, they'd probably go to the academy for a few other, learning some of these techniques. So, I mean, that's really, and is what I, what a pop unit is about, a problem-oriented, it's just...
Lon?
Thank you. My question boils down to, do you assign that unit to a problem, say, for three months or until it's solved, and then go to another problem? In other words, they're not, I shouldn't conceive of them as being part of a patrol unit, a regular patrol unit, you know, shift-wise. Am I getting, am I getting it?
Yes, conceptually, yes. And what they're going to end up doing is, they're going, and it may not necessarily be on something until it's solved. I mean, sometimes cases go for years without being solved. It may be something. These people are going to have not a case to solve or to deal with or investigate or an issue. They're going to have many. They may be on Saturday doing the traffic light investigation problem down at Route 101A, but on Monday be dealing with a drug investigation that they're going to be mired knee-deep in. They may be investigating a serious assault on Thursday. It all depends on what it is that comes up. It could be putting together a surveillance for two or three weeks. But in the time that they're doing the surveillance, there're going to be times where they're going to get pulled off of that surveillance or not have an opportunity to do it. They're going to be assigned traffic routes or directed patrols or other investigations or follow-ups to take care of. And that's kind of the beauty of being able to make sure that we have that flexibility with the officers that Councilor Dwyer spoke about, is it gives us more time to spend toward dealing with those issues on a one-on-one basis. And because now they're inherent to that individual, or I said that individual, but that unit, they stay with that unit. So we don't have to have Officer Albert investigate it and deal with the traffic problem on Monday, and then because he's off for Tuesday... And then because he's off for Tuesday and Wednesday, Officer Doyle comes in and now has investigated it, there's no continuity there. Pop unit has the continuity associated with it. And they're going to be like that particular investigative piece that every police officer in the department has. But maintain some ownership over those issues that they're dealing with on any given basis. And it'll be up to the officer who's supervising, the sergeant who's the immediate supervisor, and the commander of the division who oversees it, to manage it appropriately, to make sure that their caseload is manageable.
Thank you. Now, excuse me. With that explanation, I'm even more skeptical because now it sounds like all you need is three more officers. And you're trying to clothe it in some fancy name to try and do that, when what we're really talking about here is just the normal stuff that guys are hired for as police officers to do. And you don't really need the fancy name to deal with that. Right?
It's not a fancy name, and I, I guess that's what's happened here, is we've been mired into this whole acronym as to what it means and what everybody has an idea about what it means. And their perception is over this pop unit. And call it what you will, the addition of three extra officers is going to give us the flexibility that we need to do what we're already doing without the name associated with it. Cause that's really what we're doing.
Well, Chief, that's my last comment I wanted to make was, it sounds like to me that your bottom line is, you, you have a manpower issue and you need some help to have that addressed. And maybe this is, is a problem of your own success. We've had such a comfortable, professional feeling about, about this police department, that we just assume, give you the manpower you need and have you manage it inside the way you, the way you do. Um, maybe, maybe we just don't feel like it needs to be called anything special, that you got, your management team will manage your men as you have always done in the best way possible. And therefore, you're going to pull off somebody, we're not needing those details, you, you're, you're putting a, a special investigation, a crime tip came in on a drug investigation. Um, you, we, we're never involved in those, those talks or those details, but we feel like your department has been recognized for being a top notch. And, and again, it's, maybe it's just the success of the way you've been doing things that we're not, we're not questioning it. So we don't, we don't need to have it a name, you're just gonna, if, if, if the bottom line is manpower, uh, we can work on what the best solution is that to accommodate that. And then how you manage that manpower is, is what you do. Uh, that, one man's opinion, so.
Thank you.
I do like the heads up though, that if this in fact occurs, whether it's one, two, or three individuals, that they wouldn't have their sector thing that you would use in how you see best fit. And I think that is appropriate, um, unless I lean things differently, I don't know, but uh, um, but you're right. I mean, to get to the level of detail here, I appreciate hearing about it and, uh, and I like the idea that they might be bouncing from one thing to another as opposed to getting in a cruiser and doing your daily chores, so.
I think we all recognize that the department's been at a fixed number for quite, quite a while. And if anything, you know, part of that confidence from the public is that we, we have maintained a, a steady tax rate for several years. And part of that is managing the budget as, as best as we can, and uh, we want to keep going down that route. So however we can implement this, this increase in costs, um, what's the best way we can do it and accomplish your goal at the same time?
Just wanted to say that, um, in lieu of the officers, I added twenty-eight thousand dollars in overtime. So just keep that in mind, if you want to add an officer, that you should subtract twenty-eight thousand dollars from the whole, whole cost.
Bill?
Just not to beat a dead horse, but.
Go for it. There's nothing left of this one.
Well, I, I share the same sentiments as Counselor Dwyer. You know, instead of giving it a fancy name, I wish you told me you needed three cops. You know, I look at, I look at the stats back in twenty-ten, where you had forty full-time and six part-time, to me, six part-time, I mean, I could be wrong, but I would equate that to three full-time officers. So you were forty-three in two thousand and ten, now you're looking for another three, you're still below, still below what you had in two thousand and ten. And you're looking to do more with, with, quite honestly, you know, short two police officers, so. I mean, I, I, I agree with Counselor Dwyer, I'd, I want to figure out a way to, to add some extra, um, manpower on the streets to accomplish the goals that you want to accomplish. And obviously, like I talked, like we've talked about, you know, we're a growing community, so we need to stay on top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Alright. We all talked out on this one? Oh. Look. Do you know what I, I just commented to Finley, the three of us here have been through this how many times? Okay, I came to town in seventy-six, you think we're growing now? You think you're growing now, and then you came in in ninety-two, ninety-three.
Ninety-one.
Yeah, okay, and so. Yeah. And uh, it's just, you know, this is the, the constant push and pull and without, without politely discussing this stuff. You know, people can't make an informed decision about what they want to do or how they want to do it. I mean, I, you know, I'm, they're not taking any offense at this. I don't think.
None.
Yeah, it, it's just that we got, you know, we've got stuff in the back of our heads, we've seen things happen. You know, you look at Stratum and what happened over there, and then when it happened, I said, somebody screwed up. And sure enough, they did. Okay, they, they thought they were doing, they thought, you know, oh, yeah, we know him, hi, boom. Okay, uh, and usually, the thing that, that concerns me, they get into these kinds of mindsets, okay? And the supervisors buy into it or they ignore it, and the next thing you know, you got bodies laying all over the front lawn. And that's not, you know, that's not what I want to see, or it's not what you want to see, okay? And, but that's the real ish, one of the issues that you end up when you start doing things like in, like has been suggested, okay? And uh, you know, and perception to a lot of people is reality. So, alright.
If I can add one thing, just cause it's important, when Bill mentioned the six part timers for people who are paying attention to this stuff. There was a part, there was a time when part timers worked, but back to your point about the pool of recruits is so low that back in hindsight, those part timers started out part-time as a way to get into the police business. And as soon as there was a job in New Boston or Matt Nashville, or anyplace else where a full-time position, those part timers left. So the public needs to know, we, we can't retain part timers, one, because they're not there anymore. Um, and when, and if they're there, they're there for a very short time, because the demand for a full-time officer someplace else just takes them away. So it would be nice, if someone wants to suggest, well, why can't you guys just pick up some part timers, the, their answer is you can't. Thanks.
Now, the demand, the demands and the training requirements and the certification requirements almost make it prohibitive to do that. It just doesn't work anymore. Uh, and they started that in nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-nine, when they put the police standards and training council in. And then they adopted a standard of training for part-time officers. And a lot of them were grandfathered and refused to go to the academy, even though it wasn't the same regiment as a full-time officer. Uh, cause there used to be a part-time special police officer track. It's not, I don't think it's there anymore. So. Anyway, alright. Last, last item here, police detail, not the, actually the last item, but the next budget item on here is police detail. Which is way in the back someplace, ah, there it is.
Before day camp?
Yeah.
I could handle this for you, Mr. Chairman?
Hey! I'm sure, yeah, it's after special revenue and before day camp. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, congratulations on the conviction of the bank robber.
Oh, thank you.
That was, that was a big deal.
It was, it was a lot, that was a lot of hard work put in by our detectives who really did, and our patrol division did a lot of legwork up front. And our detectives who did a lot of legwork to find out who it was that was responsible, good team effort.
And you pled guilt, pled guilty, so that's, that's, that's even more rewarding as far as I'm concerned.
Up to forty years, it sounds like.
That's right.
Which bank was this?
TD Bank down in.
Greeley Street.
Greeley Street, yeah.
Just about a year ago, yeah.
And then I'm coming around the corner and all the cruisers come. Oh, and I didn't get his number.
Um, the reason why this uh, went, this, this area of the outside detail went up, it was because of a new rate to add in the new, um, retirement costs. The increase of retirement cost, cost. Remember that what outside details are paid one hundred percent by the person requesting the detail. So the increase of about, um, forty-two thousand dollars was due to the increase in the retirement cost. And uh, a new calculation on the wages based on the staffing at this time in the police department. Same number of hours. And once again, it is paid by the person who calls for the outside detail, and it is one hundred percent, there's an offsetting revenue in the budget. Yeah, for the most part, because we get ebbs and flows, like this year we have Fairpoint, and we're pretty good. A couple of years ago, we had the outlet mall, so that's a good number.
Except that one isn't going to be free, it's going to be reflected in your rates.
Yes.
At some point.
Yes.
If you're a fair, fair point user, that's going to show up in a PUC filing. Alright, anything else on police detail? Okay. It's the end of that one. Thank you, Chief.
Alright, thank you.
Well, what am I looking at here?
Um, this is basically for the highway garage. The first sheet that you have is the debt runout as we currently have it. And it's running around sixteen cents for the next couple of years, that's fifteen to sixteen cents is what our debt runout would be. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, we lose Green Pond, in two thousand and twenty-three, we lose, um, the drainage bond. On page two is the highway garage proposal as is, and that was what I presented last year to show the debt runout going through. And that was between eighteen cents in the first year, then it jumped up to twenty-five and twenty-four cents for those first couple of years before Green Pond's come, um, come due. On the third sheet is the debt runout, if we wait, taking in, um, cost of inflation. If we wait for the eight, uh, seventeen, eighteen year to put the bond on for highway garage and it was passed, our debt runout would be up to two thousand and twenty-three, we'd be still at the six, fifteen to sixteen cent level for the years. And that's taking account the five percent increase in building materials, if that stays the same. And of course, you know, we also have the, um, the bond interest rates, which I left constant at this time at five percent for a twenty-five year bond. Well, it drops, it drops in, it drops down to fourteen cents in, in, um, two thousand and twenty, after the first bond drops off. Once Green Pond drops off, it drops down to fourteen cents. Of course, it would cost, if, if we waited to wait till the first bond gets finished, Green Pond gets finished. It would cost the taxpayers an estimated six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars more than if we did the double bond. Meaning that if we put it on the ballot and we did double, we did a double payment. Based on inflation, because you're three years out on the cost of the building. Five percent inflation, straight inflation per year. So that's where the difference is. And on average, it's over a twenty-five year life of the bond, it's sixty-seven dollars total for a homeowner of additional cost. And uh, the waiting, to wait till Greens Pond bond comes off the books, finishes up.
Sixty-seven dollars over twenty years?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. It's a total of sixty-seven dollars.
Three dollars a year.
Yes. And that's based on a three hundred thousand dollar.
Okay. So the discussion at our last meeting was, um, are we going to propose it? I prevailed, yeah, and I prevailed upon my colleagues to wait until tonight because you weren't going to be here. Nancy expressed her opposition to putting it on already and has consistently done that. So the, the remainder is up to us as to whether or not we want to do that. So if we're going to do that, we can get the stuff ready to go forward for, uh, the budget and the budget hearing.
Just for the record, I, as I've said before, so, um, I'm for putting it on this year, I don't, I don't feel any need to, to keep postponing a decision. However, that being said, um, I also am not going to lose any sleep if we were taking a vote and I lost it. So I, as much as I think, I'm thinking it's a good idea to put this year, and if it was to fail, you, you, you just, that's, it is what it is, I hate that phrase. But, and then the year after that, three strike, try, try it again, but, um, waiting another year or so, if that's what the, the pleasure of the council is, fine. I think it's just a good year to, to give it another, another try. As I stated before, I will state it again, I really don't, I, I just think the threshold of, of the yes is almost impossible to make. Um, so I'm not, I'm not really convinced, how many times or how long you wait, or how different ways you ask. I'm just not sure that the super majority figure is attainable in this town. So, that's my two cents again on the subject.
Okay. Are we going to make a motion?
Looking for a motion?
I'm not sure what we're looking for, I, I had the impression we had decided not to go forward this year. Um, because we didn't do anything to make any changes, we haven't looked at updating any numbers, we haven't, I mean, there was a lot of stuff that I felt like we should have done if we thought we were going to convince or help people to understand the, the issues behind the highway garage, so.
That was the discussion we had back in October, November.
Yep.
And decided that, or I, maybe I convinced you, that we could wait till now to see what this document looked like. And whether or not we had any success in dealing with the outstanding contract. And now it's decision time at some point. And I think we all agreed at that point that if we felt that we could, that. And I think we all agreed at that point that if we felt that we could, that, that we would, um, what do you call it? Change our mind, if you will, for, that's a poor choice of words at this point, but, um, you know, and the sentiment at that time, you're right, Tom, the sentiment at that time was skepticism. Okay, so.
And if a sub, and if a subcommittee was formed.
Right.
And then we saw some more involvement from other individuals to, to prepare. And there was only one person that came forward to be on the committee. Which is again, another reason why I really don't have a passion to convince any of you that we should do it this year. That's why if it, if we don't, then.
Can I ask a little broad question?
Yeah.
Of the town manager? Eileen, you brought this budget forward. It doesn't have any raises in it at all to speak of. Are we anticipating anything else or any other changes to this budget?
Um, all of the union contracts in this budget, this is their last year of the contract. And there's no, there was no raises in that. Yet the health insurance went down. So, um, the only one, the only thing that you would see in terms of increases in wages would be those employees that have contracts that have steps, such as the police department and the fire department. If, um, we'll be talking about this at our next meeting. But if a contract comes forward for AFSMI and you, uh, concur with the, um, cost items, that would be a separate warrant article totaling about $35,000 net.
And you haven't proposed or, or suggested anything for non-union employees at all?
I have not, I don't believe that's my place.
Okay, thank you.
Finley?
Um, I just, it's what I said the other night. I, uh, I think it is important, but I don't think, um, I don't think, if we just put it on the ballot without the effort to go with it, I think it, because of that high number to attain, I think it's doomed to possible probable failure. And I'd rather not do that, that way. I'd rather, you know, do the work necessary to, uh, to give it its most optimistic chance of passing. And, uh, so I think we'd be better served to, to, uh, if enough of us agree that we should put it on the ballot eventually, um, then next year would be a better opportunity. And also, as far as the people jumping on board a committee, it's not like it's Parks and Rec. You know, you have Wasserman Park, Subcommittee or some, it's not that exciting.
It was hard enough the first time.
Right.
To, to, to have the involvement that we did. So yeah, I totally agree.
Right, so I.
I completely understand.
The one person came forward, I really appreciated that on their part, by the way, whoever that was.
I know, I know.
But, uh, but I'm not surprised because it's not something that gets everybody all excited. But, uh, um, I think it's just, those people, if we could get them on, it would just be to help put the whole fi, the plan together and so on and make it understandable. More people, uh, understanding the process helps us in the sell of it.
And I agree with both of you that to actually, to, I, I don't suspect that a majority of us will say yes to put it on this year. But because there really has been no new effort or no new information, no new group, no new presentation, there really hasn't been anything. I probably should, should concur with the rest of you guys because of that, because there, there has not been any other effort made, um, by me or anyone else to, to push the effort forward. So I completely understand why you wouldn't wanna do it this year. The public is, has, we, we, we're starting from zero. There's no, there's been nothing new offered. And we actually haven't talked about it a lot as a group either. So we haven't, we haven't tried to sell it to the community again this year either.
Okay. I guess we're done.
Their motion? I'd like to have a vote.
I'll, I'll make it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take the highway garage proposal and present it to the voters on the next upcoming election.
You're saying what you want.
Sixteen, seventeen.
Fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen, sixteen.
I'll second it.
Okay.
And I'll call the question.
So, I just wanna be really clear, you're suggesting that we put forward the bond request this year?
Correct.
And not delay till next year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything further? All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion fails one, five, zero.
Let the record show that Dan Dwyer fell on his sword tonight.
Not necessarily. It's a lot of stitches, man.
There is one last thing is, um, and it's real quick because Monday, the twenty-sixth, we're starting our deliberations. How do you wanna proceed? Do you want anything from Eileen or myself for that? If you do, please contact Eileen and we'll get it for you, uh, for that night.
For numbers.
For numbers. If you wanna add something, abstract something, um, uh, staffing, anything like that, because there's a lot more than just the staffing number. It's health insurance and benefits and things of that sort, so, on that. And we'll have it, on the Monday, the twenty-sixth. And if we run late, we also have the twenty-ninth, Thursday, the twenty-ninth, before we have to really finalize for the public hearing.
Everybody all set?
I'll hold on.
Is there a motion?
Motion, John. Second it.
Moved by Counsel Koenig, seconded by Counsel Boyd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Eileen?